Today is Wednesday, October 16th, 2024, and we are at the City of Reno Council Chamber. We'll begin with Agenda Item 1, the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Villanueva, will you please lead us? You, we will now close Item 1 and move to Agenda Item 2. Secretary, can we get a roll call, please?
Harris Armstrong.
Here.
Carrie Romeyer.
Here.
Manny Becerra.
Here.
Christina Del VR.
Here.
JD Draculich.
Here.
Sylvia Villanueva.
Here.
And Alex Velto is absent at this time. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll close Item 2, and before moving to Item 3, we actually have an announcement. Item 4.3, LDC 25-00003, 2400 West 7th Street, has been continued with no date certain. We will be moving this ahead of Item 4.1 when we open public hearings. Mike, do you have anything to add to that announcement?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, Item 4.3 has been continued at the request of the applicant. The project will be re-notice for a future date. Public, because public notices were sent for this case, we will open public comment, take public comment, but the commission will have no discussion or take no action on this item.
Thank you. And just before moving on, do we have any objections to moving Agenda Item 4.3 ahead of Agenda Item 4.1 when we open public hearings?
No objection.
Great, thank you so much. We will close Item 2 and move to Item 3, Public Comment. This item is for public comment on any action item or any general public comment.
Members of the public may call into the meeting to provide public comment by using the Zoom link provided on the agenda, specifically It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you are an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior is continued. With that, we have no requests to speak forums, voicemails, or correspondence for this particular item.
Great, thank you. Do we have anyone in the chambers wishing to speak under general public comment? Go ahead and fill out a request to speak form. Oh, you're good? Okay.
I believe he's going to speak under the first item tonight.
Okay, so, no, you're good. This is general public comment. Before we open public hearings, do we have anyone wishing to speak generally under this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close Item 3 and move to Item 4, Public Hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when a public hearing is heard will need to so indicate on the request to speak form provided to the secretary. Alternatively, you may provide your comment when Item 3, Public Comment, is heard at the beginning of the meeting. As stated at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to open with Item 4.3, LDC-25-00003, 2400 West 7th Street. As we had mentioned before, it's been continued at the request of the applicant with no date certain, but since it is noticed, we will be having public comment on this item. I've received a couple of requests to speak forms on this item, starting with Mary Beth Burrows.
April Sitts, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't hear you, so. My name's Mary Beth Burrows, and I live off of 7th Street by the proposed buildings. And my service dog is my hearing dog. We walk across 7th on Wyoming nearly every day, and we have a big issue of cars not stopping for us, cars not seeing us, and I really have concerns about any additional traffic. And I know they have all of their statistics, but I live it. And I think recently, we had a man and his dog killed on King's Row in traffic. I did a Reno Direct. They actually canceled it because they know traffic speeding is so bad on that street. And I hope that you have thought of that for the people that live there when you say any added traffic. I know there's going to be another building on Stoker, which would probably add to that traffic. I saw in McDonald's and 7th, they've put a light for crosswalk that blinks. I hope that they would put that along all the school just crosswalks, because when I cross, there's parked cars. They can't see me until I'm in the crosswalk, so we have to be very cautious. And I'm thinking, if a child is there and there's two parked cars, they won't see them, and that could be a real disaster. So I would like to see that they have more of those flashing lights for us. I am not against building, but I am for safety. And there is definitely, per the police, safety issues on 7th with speeding. So I would hope that that is a consideration. And like I said, when I cross, there's cars right there. They need to put red on the sidewalk curb so cars aren't blocking people walking into the crosswalk also coming the other way. I sit there with April sitting next to me, three, four, five cars pass by, and I'm like, is somebody going to stop for me? If we had one of those lights, they would see it. They obviously don't see me standing there on the curb. But that was my whole purpose for being here. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments.
What?
Oh, thank you for your comments.
Oh, thank you.
Next, we have Barbara Carosa wishing to speak.
Hello, everyone. My name's Barbara Carosa. I heartily endorse what this lady just said. Traffic on 7th Street is just beyond anything. People are speeding. They're not paying attention to pedestrians. It is a significant risk. And my statement today is basically short but concise. My original statement that I had planned to present to this commission tonight was my apprehension that cluster designation under the City of Reno's municipal code was being used for this project when it clearly is not compliant for this development. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Tim Smith.
Sorry. Hi there, Tim Smith. Live at 2575 Everett Drive. Also commenting on this new development. So initial look, when I took a look at the plans, I was overwhelmed to see the density of houses on this plot of land. It looked nothing like the adjacent neighbors, neighborhoods. To learn that I would now potentially have two back neighbors as opposed to one like everyone else in this neighborhood was disheartening. In looking into it, I saw that they're proposing this cluster development and then looking up the municipal code. A review of this, it looks like this development does not meet the requirements of a cluster development. The code states, "Cluster development is encouraged to support the protection of sensitive natural resources, view sheds, or other unique site features, promote fire safety within wildland interface, provide opportunities for shared common open space, protect documented wildlife corridors, and provide a more gradual transition to the unincorporated county and public lands." Of the items listed in this statement, this plan does not meet any of these. They might try to state that view sheds are preserved given that the houses are more narrow. However, their setbacks only being at five feet, the minimum, means there's only a 10-foot view, whereas the adjacent neighborhoods have upwards of 20 feet between homes. Further, if this development is deemed acceptable as a cluster development despite not really falling into the definition, per code, they're required to adopt appropriate mitigation measures. These are defined as edge matching, landscaping, screening, illumination standards, and other design features to buffer and protect against adjacent properties. These mitigation standards are not well-defined in the cluster provision of the code. But I would code as clear-cut standards of what those are, but I would defer to the single-family adjacency standards to get a more clear picture of how transitions are completed when there is a change of one type of neighborhood to another. The developer would say that this section, 18.04.903A7, would not apply since there's no change of zoning district from development to development, but which would make sense if you followed the basic standards of SF8 zoning. By its very nature, there would not be any, need to be any transition standards as the neighborhoods would match. Here is not the case, as the parcel sizes are smaller and rear yards do not match. Each house on the existing neighborhood would now have two houses behind them rather than one. I would argue that since in the cluster provision there is not clear standards of buffering, but the word buffer is mentioned, the code also states that the clustering proposal meets all other applicable requirements set forth in this article or in other applicable ordinances or regulations, we would defer to other parts of the code with clear definitions of buffering. Right now, they have a 17-foot buffer. The adjacency standard code requires 30 feet fully landscaped, 100 feet if not landscaped. Can I just give another 10 seconds?
Sure, it's fine.
All right. Currently, the yards do not match and the parcel size is not, which would be the other requirements for transitioning. I believe that the code is meant to require or protect both citizens and keep consistency within the city, and I believe that doing this as a cluster development would go against that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have TJ Harvey.
Hi, my name is TJ Harvey, 2605 Everett Drive. I'm speaking in opposition to Agenda Item 4.3, 2400 West 7th. I've read and thoroughly reviewed the definition of cluster development within Reno Municipal Code. It is clearly defined in multiple places. I have also reached out and spoken to a handful of developers in the area. They have helped me understand when and how a cluster development should be used. A cluster development is meant to protect a natural resource or a unique site feature. Also in its definition, it's meant to be used in an area connected to unincorporated county or public lands. For example, imagine a square lot bordering an undeveloped land. In the top left-hand corner of the lot could be a marsh area, a stream, or even a rock outcropping. A cluster development would allow a reduction in lot size in order to cluster homes away from the unique site feature. This would preserve the site feature but still allow the same amount of development within a smaller footprint. Associate Planner Piccotti stated on 9/19 to Wood Rogers, "Staff is unable to process this application as a cluster development. The project is not protecting a sensitive resource. There's no proposed usable common open space. There are no wildlife corridors. It's an infill project distant from any trails or public lands, and every tree is being removed." Wood Rogers has made no substantial changes to their plans. They have, however, latched on to a few of Piccotti's points and made half-hearted attempts to pencil them in. Wood Rogers has proposed to develop an 8,000-square-foot area in the southwest corner of the property by adding a couple benches. Piccotti stated that the area must be ADA accessible. The problem is, this area is also a major drainage point from the western properties. The proposed common area has a single access point shown in plans as a five-foot-wide buffer and has also been designated as a drainage channel. So the access point is five-foot wide, must be ADA accessible, provide drainage, and be a buffer between property lines. Not possible. The open space designated is less than 5%. This has nothing to do with preserving a unique site feature. Open space is not to be, is not meant to be an afterthought. If Wood Rogers truly meant to follow guidelines of cluster development, this would have been a major component of the original plan. The fact that they are trying to fit it in now is evidence Wood Rogers is not trying to preserve anything. They're only trying to reap the benefits of cluster development in order to reduce lot sizes. Wood Rogers also states they are preserving view sheds. This lot does have city views, enough so that people come to the church parking lot to watch fireworks. If you look at the plans and imagine 28-foot-tall homes, anyone can see there is no preservation of view sheds. Grading down and buffering won't help. The views will be deleted. Again, if this was a true attempt at cluster, this would have been designated from the beginning as a crucial element of the plan. I understand the city wants infill. There is room to develop responsibly within code and match the current neighborhood. Wood Rogers never intended to develop this as a true cluster development. This lot does not meet the criteria. As Piccotti mentioned, it is an infill development. Wood Rogers was asked by Piccotti multiple times to justify development under the cluster provision. Their justifications are simply afterthoughts, addendums, attempt to gain approval. As much as the city wants infill, codes do have to be followed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I don't have any additional requests to speak forms. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Zoom?
It doesn't look like we have anyone's hands raised on Zoom at this time.
Any additional requests to speak forms?
We do not have any additional requests to speak forms.
Before we close this item, is there anyone else in chambers wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will-
Chair, also just going to interject here. We did receive some public comment that was forwarded to the Planning Commission.
Understood, thank you. Oh, Ms., did you want to give a public comment on this item? Yeah, absolutely. Please fill out a request to speak form, and then just go ahead and state your name for the record.
You can do that after.
You can do it after, Ms., thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Brown. I'm a member of the church that currently resides at 2400 West 7th Street. And we haven't invested in the community there. And we're currently trying to make proposals for the church that owns the property as well as for the city, because we see a dynamic for how the city and the master plan and how we can combine the two to create a better place for the whole neighborhood, create a center for, like, say, for instance, the people that got put out of their home on McCarron and 7th Street a few weeks ago because the whole apartment area burned down. Well, with the community center there, you know, at least we've been able to help those that were displaced by the fires and stuff. So I just think that we have a lot invested in, and we're working out a plan to send to the church and to the diocese and the city of Reno. We're just, we're learning how to go about doing it in the appropriate manner. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in chambers wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close Item 4.3 and move to Item 4.1, LDC 24-00065, Virginia Village Self-Storage. You have a presentation from staff.
Chair, we have Carter Williams on Zoom.
Okay, great.
We might have, we just need to get him to get his presentation shared. Might take a minute or two.
Understood, thank you. Carter, whenever you're ready, just please go ahead and begin with your presentation.
All right. I'm actually getting the notice that I cannot share, start screen share while the other participant is sharing, so I'm assuming my team may need to provide my presentation.
Okay, Carter, IT is going to have to share that presentation for you.
Okay, that's fine. Right. Good evening, Commissioners. Carter Williams, Associate Planner, for the record. Apologize for not being able to be there in person. I had a conflict this evening. The specific application before us today is for a mini warehouse facility. Next slide, please. The property is located on, excuse me, east of North Virginia Street, located across the street from Tallis Way. It is located halfway between North McCarron and Far Boulevard. To the west of the site are existing townhouses, and to the east is a future residential subdivision. The specific request is for a conditional use permit for three items. A mini warehouse adjacent to residentially-zoned property, a major disturbance of a major drainage way, and fills greater than 10 feet. There is a fourth one indicated on the description for hillside development, but that one actually is not applicable to this project. There is, lastly, an alternative compliance that was submitted or requested by the applicant for specific building design and standards. Next slide, please. The property is located within the suburban mixed-use master plan and land use designation, and the project itself meets a number of specific policies of the master plan, generally related to hydrological resources, major drainage ways, tree installation, and conditions that increase compatibility with the relation, the adjacent neighborhoods. Next slide. The property is zoned general commercial, which allows for a mini warehouse with the conditional use permit. Adjacent, the property is adjacent to single-family to the east, as I noted, indicated there. And with that, there are standards for residential adjacency that apply, including for lighting and signage. Next slide, please. So the project proposes 216 mini warehouse units in 11 clusters. So the product is modular in nature, so they're able to be combined to form linear building forms that you might expect with a standard self-storage facility. The project also includes a space for RV storage near the center of the site. The portion of the property abutting North Virginia Street in the plan on the screen is the major drainage way and wetland area. Drawing attention to the green line on the screen, the applicant has accepted conditions to create a dense screen between the future residential subdivision and this project. In addition to this, the orange line at the bottom of the screen indicates the location of a six-foot solid fence with additional landscaping and trees that intend to blend into the existing topography and prioritize the view of that major drainage way. Next slide, please. This is the sightline analysis that provides a view of the different tiers of the site. So the bottom tier is where it's proposed to be developed, and it is at the same elevation as the street. The orange tier indicates the existing railroad spur that's operated by Union Pacific. And the top green line is the finished grade of the subdivision to the east. The tree symbols indicate the locations of the trees that are to be planted with, by condition for this project. Next slide, please. So the applicant has requested an alternative compliance. I'll try to address this one first. So the proposed modular product is shown in the image on the screen in the blue and the gray. The specific request is to deviate from standard architectural requirements with the condition that the entire front and rear of the site is screened as indicated on the site plan and that the buildings be painted in earth tones. The intent is to integrate the development into the existing site and prioritize visual preference for the major drainage way over the developed character. Next slide, please. From a compatibility standpoint, this is a low-intensity use relative to other uses that are allowed within the general commercial zone. The screening elements previously described support compatibility adjacent to the residential to the east, and it's generally consistent as a transitional use. The area north carries an industrial master plan and zoning, and the area south is suburban mixed use and general commercial. Next slide, please. Part of the application is a disturbance of the major drainage way. The area of disturbance is minimal and mostly, most of the drainage way is left untouched. The area designated as wetland will not be disturbed with this application. The existing crossing that is there for the access is existing. The orange area on the screen indicates the primary areas of disturbance to think of an idea of the degree of disturbance and the remainder being unchanged. Next slide. This application also includes fills greater than 10 feet in height. These are generally limited, and staff is not concerned with these areas, and they do not cause any particular, we don't anticipate any visual impact with these fill areas. Next slide. Staff requested an alternative development analysis to see the possibility of removing all the grading within 15 feet of the existing boundary of the major drainage way. The applicant submitted the alternative scenario, and it showed that 46%, reduction in developable area on the site, which is significant enough to justify some disturbance to that major drainage way. Next slide, please. On the screen are the findings for a conditional use permit. Generally, staff finds that the use is compatible with the proposed conditions. Staff also finds that the specific findings for grading are achieved and does not have significant visual impacts. I'm sorry, next slide for the next set of findings. And then, next slide. And lastly, these are the findings for an alternative compliance. Staff also was able to make the findings because the proposed improvements prioritize that visual preference for the drainage way. Next slide. And on the screen is the recommended motion. I'm available for any questions after the applicant is able to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Carter. Well, it looks like we'll get a presentation from the applicant. Mr. Krimpotic. Turn your mic on, please.
Is that better?
Much better.
Thank you. John Krimpotic with KLS Planning. I'm representing Rob Fitzgerald this evening. He's the owner, applicant, and developer. He's with Northern Nevada Homes. And Billy Anderson is our civil engineer with Loomis Engineering. He's with us as well. I'll try and fill in the gaps where we're a little bit unique to the staff perspective. Staff showed an exhibit similar to this. You can see the idea is the footprint of the project. In the foreground is the wetland area, the drainage area that's left intact as it sits today. Then you have the development footprint, and then above it, the railroad tracks and the adjacent development of the single-family residential above that. You can see the little graded area. I'm showing these two so you can see the toggle of the trees that evolved to the condition of which we do accept. There's the original plan that meets the code on the front end, the Virginia Street side. So imagine looking at the project So imagine looking at the project over the little culvert there into the, into the project area. You see the double row of trees in the back adjacent to the railroad. Of course, that's the screening of which staff analyzed and supported as the visual screening for that, the single family above. That is what we did in evolution of the project to where it is today. And accepted the new condition, which is more screening plus the wall along the Virginia Street side. So you see a nice band of double evergreen or heavy evergreen trees in that area. Here is the same exhibit, but a little bit less engineeringy than, than we shared with staff and the one that Carter shared. I wanted to touch on a couple of things. One, you can see the change in elevation from the residential up above. That's two-story residential as it's approved and under construction. On the very left side, you see Virginia Street would be just off the left side of the map. So the screening conditions, as we noted in the red ovals there, seven, eight and 10. The double row of trees with, you can see the wall right adjacent to it on the Virginia Street side. Then the storage product, then moving up the hill. At the end of the project, you see the double row of trees and the six-foot tall fence over there. Important, I, I'd see this as about as, as much environmental set of CUPs as you'll see because we had hillside drainage way, wetland resource that's being left intact. This map was created by a wetland consultant, environmental planner. Notice the legend there says open water and vegetation. And the palestrine emergent wetland, which was established when they did the analysis and the Army Corps approval. And what you see there in those different segments of green and blue are, as it sits today, that remains the same. A different perspective, three, three-dimensional real world. Again, you can kind of see what's going on. That's one on the left is looking up Virginia Street. You see the existing crossing, the culvert underneath it, and you see the wetland type of vegetation. It's more pronounced on the right side, obviously the presence of water. And then we're up above that in the upland area there, whereas it gets a bit flatter. Going the other direction from the site, looking downstream, again, you can see the wetland type of vegetation remains as you see it there. Both on the left and on the right. And open space, it's important in the overall analysis, just to point out that we're providing 3.0 acres versus the 2.6 that's required. And of course, it's in the foreground of the project, which I think does have some community benefit in this case. That's all I have, commissioners. Thank you for your time. I'm here for any questions. If you have anything that wants to get real technical with our civil, he's here as well. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll bring it back to the commission for disclosures. Commissioner Del VR, please start.
I have been to the location and I have a couple of comments later.
Commissioner Becerra, familiar with the site, read and reviewed materials.
Commissioner Villanueva read the materials. I believe that's it.
Commissioner Dracula, I have, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Rohrmeier, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Armstrong read and received materials and I'm familiar with the site.
We'll go ahead and close disclosures and we'll now move to public comment. I have no request to speak forums. Is there anyone wishing to speak via Zoom?
Doesn't look like we have anyone's hands raised at this time. We do not have any requests to speak forums, correspondence or voicemails for this item.
Do you have anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment for this item. Bring it back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Del VR?
Yeah, Commissioner Del VR, I had a couple of questions and I'm not sure who would, would address them. But I did, I did go to the site and one of the things that I noticed was traffic is really bad there. It took me seven and a half minutes to turn right from where I was. And so it looks like there's only one entrance and exit, if I'm correct. But I'm also just kind of curious because there's a lot of high schoolers, there's some cars. Are, you know, is there any intention of putting in any sort of traffic barriers or any, anything that's going to help? People who are trying to cross the street or get out of the actual units themselves.
Carter Williams, associate planner, just to, the applicant did submit a traffic entry and access study that included trip generation for the site. And it indicated that the peak hour trips, so the, the trips that are going to be at the times when it's most busiest during the day are single digits. So it is not anticipated that a lot of people are going to be making those movements at the high traffic hours. And overall, the number of trips estimated is 47 trips daily. So that, that was staff's justification for supporting the project as proposed. And the numbers as they are, don't require any additional studies to be submitted per, per code and policy.
Got it, thank you. That, that's super helpful.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Villanueva.
I have a question for Carter. Carter, can you repeat earlier, you, you mentioned there was something that was not applicable? Was it hillside or was it the disturbance of a major drainage way? You said something was written but not applicable.
Excuse me, yes, it was, it was hillside development. So in the code, properties that are less than 10 acres in size are not required to go through this process for, for the, the specific triggers for hillside development. It, it, we still are looking at the grading with respect to the fills to the site and the specific grading that impacts the drainage way. But the hillside development, they are exempt from this process technically.
Okay. Okay, I think I have a few questions for the applicant. I need some clarity on a couple of things. You, will you pull up your, please pull up your presentation? There is some images that I wanted to reference.
Which one, Commissioner?
That, actually that.
That one there, that cross section?
Yeah.
Yeah.
First one. Not that one, the one before that.
Before that?
Yeah, that one.
Lots of trees.
What is, so is that the only entryway into the site?
That is the only entryway.
Okay, does that cut right through the water? What is that? Not the drainage way, but this, the?
It, it was established as, you know, going back years ago. A wetland area. You can see it best in, I think, this photo right there to the right. Now, actually, look at the one to the left because you actually see the existing roadway crossing there with the culvert.
The one on the left, my left?
The one on the left, yeah, the photo on the left, that is the existing crossing that we're using.
So it's already there?
It's already there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, so explain to me again, I, I don't understand how the, the wetland is not being impacted. Where, where does the water that enters the wetland come from?
When I say it's not, the, the impact was, you know, there's always impact with a development project, right? In this one, in the case of the wetlands, we're not doing anything to it. So no further impact, no net loss. You have the environmental consultant, who's a wetlands consultant, who did the study with the 439-page hydrology report, who then submitted to Army Corps, this is permitted as such, we're not doing anything more to it.
Okay.
It's upland from there, that's what I'm suggesting.
What do you mean upland?
You know, outside of the, you got a water surface elevation of the hundred year. We're much above that in the upland, the, the bank of the slope.
Okay, and where does, so, because I think one of the items here, so I understand we're not impacting the wetland in it, in it of itself. And you're telling me, I didn't read the Army Corps of Engineer, I didn't read the report, obviously, but they approved it. The agency approved it, obviously, is what you're saying. For the ma, major drainage way. Which I think that we, is that here? Development mini warehouse, grading resulting cuts, hillside, and yeah, disturbance of a major drainage way. So does the water from the major drainage way enter the wetland? Is that where the, why it's a wetland? Because the water?
That's right, and it sits there as opposed to just run through.
Okay, so if I'm understanding clearly, again, I didn't read the report, but you're telling me the wetland isn't impacted. I guess it is, but enough to where it's not bothering some of the Army Corps of Engineers. But the drainage way is impact, is, there's an impact to the drainage way. And I guess thereby maybe an impact to the, to the wetland. But what's the, can you explain to me the impact to the drainage way? What's, what are we dealing, what are we looking at here with the drainage way? It's, because I'm seeing here a disturbance of major drainage way.
Yeah, disturbance is, you know, enhancement is disturbance. And we don't have anything in the code that says we're enhancing a drainage way. We would sit here with a straight face and suggest it's being enhanced. Because you're outside of any water elevation ever known to the site or to man. You sit above it, right where the grade break is at that tree, you see on the left side. And we're adding planting there. So that is technically disturbance. It's not in the drainage way, it's definitional stuff.
You, do you or staff happen to, okay, so you sort of have a map here.
Yeah.
Is there, is there like a GIS or anything where I can see the drainage way better and then see what we're, what we're looking at?
Can I, is there a pointer here? I want to simplify this.
John, is there a mouse up there that you can use to?
Okay, here we go. This is, see this right here, Commissioner Villanueva? See that area?
Where the trees are?
Yes, above the trees.
Okay.
There is the new wall of which we agreed to in the condition, right? That's the grade break line, that's the flatland. I mean, you can see how flat this area is, that's our footprint of development.
So where's the drain? It bypasses the drainage, it's above the drainage?
That's right, the drainage way in the, in the purer sense is down here, right? And you can see in the waterway, there, you can clearly see you're outside in the dry area. Right?
My concern is, are we putting impervious concrete there or?
No, and it's best shown in this cross section, which is right here. There's the, there's the drainage way over here. There's the improvements up at the top of the hill.
Okay, question for staff.
If I touch on the, the traffic one, I think it's important because our engineer and the RTC, this is probably a good note for the commission. We met with the complete streets team, RTC, NDOT. And there's a mega project that's being done, the next phase, all the way up Virginia Street. Pushing sidewalk over the other side of Virginia Street. And there's, there's a lot going on there, so you know about it. Okay.
A question for Carter. I'm trying to understand then, if that's the case, why? Why does it say here we have to review the disturbance of a major drainage way if it's not?
That's a question for Carter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Villanueva, Carter Williams. So I actually do have a slide in my presentation that indicates the specific area that we're talking about. So the, the, these major drainage ways, they are, the boundaries of them are established by what's called a hundred-year water surface elevation. So in a hundred-year flood, the water is expected to be anticipated at this, at a specific level. From the boundary of that, 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 those points, we go up 15 feet. So any grading disturbance that occurs within 15 feet of this potential flood area triggers the requirement to, to review for impacts to major drainage way.
Okay, and then, yeah, I, okay, I understand that. Can I also take, do you, can you pull up the map that you had earlier? Sorry, I'm toggling up. Does anyone else have questions? So I, let me pause and then I'm going to let others speak, because I do have a few, I, I do have a few questions. So I'm going to pause and let Commissioner.
Commissioner Becerra.
Becerra, talk, thank you.
Whenever you're ready, Commissioner, thank you.
Sure, happy to take the baton here. It's going to be one for Mr. John Kay and one for Carter.
Yes, sir.
How you doing, John?
Good, thank you.
Good, good to see you.
You too, thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
Of course.
How will you or I guess your client ensure that the proposed landscaping, which I believe is 70% evergreen, 30% deciduous, provide for that year-round screening for the residential areas up above? Especially during the winter when the deciduous trees lose their leaves.
Soil amendments, you know, so there's the mitigation of soil for enhancement that way. Irrigation and then care, replacement of any dead trees. You know, and it takes a little time, as you know.
Yeah, the standard stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, and kind of related, while I have you, and I'll pivot to Mr. Carter here. I think there's a adjacent business, right? ABC roofing or something along those lines?
It, it's not adjacent, not that I know of, yeah.
I was just curious if.
Yeah, it's quite, quite a separation, yeah.
If they're okay or if they had any input.
Didn't hear anything from anybody. We had a nice NAB meeting. You know, no real concerns there and, you know, traffic's always a question. But of course, this is the lowest of all traffic generators in the spectrum of land use proposals.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Carter, I'm going to ask a follow-up similar question, more around the landscaping. I believe John, what he told me and his client, everyone tries to operate in good faith, I believe. But could you please elaborate on the process for ensuring the landscape, the landscaping is maintained to effectively mitigate visual impacts in the long term? Like what enforcement mechanisms are in place if the applicant by chance happened, fails to maintain these conditions?
Absolutely, so I mean, if, if the conditions aren't maintained, it goes to code enforcement, they're, they're, they would be the enforcement arm. And it's, it's a little hard to speculate on what, procedurally, what that would look like. But the, the first step is to initiate with code enforcement. And then they would go in and cite them. First of all, there's a financial component to that, to those citations. And it's possible that it could lead to the, they coming back before this body to review if they, they haven't met those conditions.
Okay, fantastic. Do you have a follow-up if that's okay unless Commissioner Villanueva is ready?
You can finish with your follow-up if you're ready.
Sure, thanks, Chair. I guess, Carter, I'll, I'll hand it off to you. While the report indicates that the project, the projected traffic impacts are minimal, would you mind clarifying whether there are any long-term concerns with traffic volume or congestion in the surrounding area as the project develops? Especially with planned development in the region?
I think that would be the best to, I'm not sure if Mike Michelle or a member of the engineering division is in the room.
I believe he is, he's, he heard you, he heard you summon him and he's coming on up.
Mike Michelle, engineering manager for the record. If I understand the question correctly, I think the best way for me to answer that is traffic will increase on North Virginia. There, there's just going to be more traffic, there's more development. But NDOT and RTC, they have a complete streets project planned in the, in the near term that will, that will enhance that street, providing, you know, a shared, shared pathway for pedestrians and bicycles and, you know, in, increasing the traffic flow as, as much as possible.
Thank you, sir, just to follow up on that specific thing. So I guess my question is, and maybe it's related to some of the line of questioning for my fellow commissioners. Will the single point, the single access point be sufficient for this potential future demand or traffic?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Don't want to forget commissioners on Zoom, Commissioner Dracula or Commissioner Rohrmeier, do you have any questions at this time?
Commissioner Dracula, now you guys are answer, asking some of the questions I had, so thank you.
Got it. Commissioner Rohrmeier?
None here, thank you.
Great, bring it back to those of us in person. Any additional questions from the commission? Commissioner Villanueva?
Yes. Carter, are you there?
I am here, yes.
I, I saw you had a map earlier with the different land uses for the area. I saw, I think I saw, this one is suburban mixed use, but there were some others. I think multifamily, I saw. I just want to see that map and kind of see what the surrounding areas consist of. Because I think one of the findings is to determine compatibility with the surrounding areas and character.
Maybe slide eight for IT, I think.
Okay. Oh, that was good, I think you had it.
Did you want the previous one?
Yeah, the one with all of the land use designations. Okay, so we have. Okay, so we have general commercial. So I have a question, Carter, because I don't, you know, I, I don't know how general commercial in these areas. Actually, let me look at the master plan. How would this area be designated in the master plan where it's located? As far as, when we consider the master plan, what's the character of this area?
It'll be the previous slide, if I could pull that up. So the master plan is, there's actually a kind of a boundary here and it's unfortunate I don't have, blowing up a little bit more. But generally, this corridor was split at a point where we acknowledged that there, there wasn't going to be, there was, there's no interest in maintaining. Makes you suburban more north along Virginia Street specifically.
There was or wasn't?
There, there wasn't, so.
Okay.
The master plan transitioned to more of industrial uses. So you see the odd, the gray just above this property, all these properties that are actually, there's, there's a few industrial properties there now. Most of them are mixed use suburban. Those will eventually all transition, transition to industrial zoning. So this, this will be a very.
Near, near residential?
It would be against that mixed, mixed, sorry, that, that mixed neighborhood area, yes. But those will be subject to residential adjacency requirements, as well as that's the separation, that's a pretty significant.
So like on a grander scale, I'm looking here at the master plan and it's showing, I mean, is this foothill? Is this in the, when you're looking at the larger scale master plan, is this, would this be considered foothill? Or would it be, I think there's something else that's after, before foothill, let me see.
I think that is in the foothill neighborhoods within the structure plan, but those policies are really more geared towards the residential component. I, I think from our perspective, we're looking at the residential adjacency. Is it, is it compatible with, with the, the process that we have? And the standards and code for, for residential adjacency? So we look at lighting, we look at impacts of buildings and then additional screening.
Okay, the reason I ask is because the other concern I have is, I have a couple of concerns. So the walls, I mean, if this is in fact, and I, I guess you'll tell me in a little bit, if this is in fact foothill, my concern is the walls. I mean, these are, it looks like, I, I know that there's screening, but it appears to be concrete walls. Is that true?
They are, there is a condition that requires them to be articulated and code currently requires all screening to be architecturally compatible. So from that perspective, they have to be in the same earth tone color as the buildings are proposed as. So the intent was to, to make them kind of disappear with the landscaping, so that the, the view of the major drainage way is the, is the focus.
What I ask is because if this is in the foothill area, I, you know, some of the policies in the master plan that correlate and are tied to a foothill, I see those being invaded with something like a concrete wall. And, and we can go into why that is, but I'm going to save you guys that conversation. But the other concern I have, and I, I need some answers on this as well. But the other concern I have, and I need some answers on this as well. So there's, I see multiple places within the application where there's requests for alternate equivalent compliance. At what point do we reach that threshold where alternative equivalent, we're asking for multiple alternative equivalent compliance? When do we reach a threshold where it's like you're just not in compliance at all at some point? Is, I mean, does that exist? Or there's just more, you know, I see here alternative equivalent compliance for architecture, alternative equivalent compliance for walls. So at what point do we say, this is a, what is it, a square peg in a round hole?
So staff's perspective on this was, so the applicant indicated that Nevada Department of Transportation has a plan that trend, that moves the sidewalk to the other side. For building articulation, ground floor interest, that's transparency requirements for windows, like all these things that are intended to make buildings look nice, they're really intended to enhance that pedestrian corridor from our perspective and generally to look nice. From our perspective, we have this significant feature, a natural feature that we want to prioritize. And we're looking at the master plan.
Could you go, sorry to pause, I just, you said something. Why is that? Like what, what are you guys trying to, what's the prioritize? What natural feat, why is that? Is it because we're in the foothill? Why do we have to prioritize a natural?
Because generally, so there's a number of master plan policies that indicate that we want to protect prioritizes recreation, natural resources. So it's, I think in some cases, these are competing master plan policies. And from staff's perspective, the protection of that major drainage ways and protection of wetlands wins out in this case over something that, from an architectural standpoint, isn't going to have
For sure.
benefit to the community.
Okay, sorry, and that cut you off. Continue.
Oh, no, I think I'm, I think I finished.
So what they, so to your point, do we ever, do we, at what point do we say that this is not? So you guys don't believe that this is a square peg in a round hole? That we're, all these requests for, you know, changes. I mean, do we get to a point where it's, this doesn't meet the development code? We're doing mitigation, we're doing, you know, equivalent compliance. We're trying to veer from the wetlands, but then at the same time, we're trying to dodge the drainage. Staff didn't have any issues with that?
I, I think from, from our perspective, well, first of all, I mean, we are, this, this application is here because this doesn't meet the code as it currently stands.
Yeah, that's fair.
So the, and we are really looking deeper into the policies of the master plan to identify, I mean, priorities. And in the end, I think it's up to the commission whether or not those priorities went out. From our perspective, the pedestrian environment isn't along the side of the corridor. It's pushed off. And for that matter, it's, I mean, it's, I think it's a good example of, I mean, something that we would want to protect, I think, from a wetland and major drainage way perspective.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm sorry for the interrogation, but I did need, you're knowledgeable and I needed that information, so thank you. No questions, no more questions for me.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think I saw Commissioner Rohmeyer. Did you raise your hand via Zoom? Did you have a question or comment?
I did. I think I got it answered, but since Carter is on the line, maybe I'll just ask.
Sure.
Am I correct in understanding that really the trigger for the disturbance to the major drain in which way is the extra landscaping and the decorative wall? It's not really the building's footprints.
My understanding, no, that, so that, the, the proposed grading was prior to the condition for the additional landscaping on the wall. That was, that was a part of their analysis that allowed them to develop to the, to the extent that they have.
But they don't have a map showing the area of the 100 acres potentially being drained, overlaid with their site plan, where that disturbance is taking place.
They do, and it actually is one of my, my, uh, in, in my slides.
Can you just take one quick look at that again?
Excuse me, I'll find the actual, I believe it is slide 11 or 10. Sorry, excuse me, it's, it might be nine. Sorry, it's nine.
Okay, so it's these filarias that are shaded in blue?
So the, the, the green area, the green line is the edge of the 15-foot buffer from the, the hundred-year water surface elevation. I didn't explicitly mark the WSC, but it is a dashed line, black dashed line.
But there are no buildings being put, this is a grading and potentially area to be supportive of landscaping in the wall?
Correct. And those areas also have to be revegetated to a natural state to actually support ecological succession or the, I mean, the, they have to be integrated into the existing landscape and native fauna and flora or flora.
Okay, no, that, I appreciate this. This helps me. I feel like this is an enhancement to the upland, which is not in fact part of the wetlands as delineated by the consultant. Actually, had they pushed back, you know, there would be no 100 acres, 100 significant floodplain drain. Now I'm a mess of words, but really it isn't the buildings themselves or even asphalt paving as much as it is supporting the future landscape and decorative walls. And that gives me great hope. So I appreciate the added clarity.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any further questions from the commission? Commissioner Becerra?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Just one more. Mr. Carter. Would you mind clarifying whether the city has obtained sufficient assurances to mitigate any potential liability from flooding or water damage claims by adjacent property owners due to the drainage easement and water surface elevation increase? Or would this be covered by the proposed condition number 13?
Yeah, the proposed condition would not allow for the property owner to develop the property as proposed unless they secure those easements. And those, that has to be in coordination and in agreement with the adjacent property owner. And my understanding is that they already have affidavits or some, some, some kind of, something in place to, to give the property owner that, that's going to go forward as planned.
Fantastic, Carter. Mr. John, would you mind confirming that? Because you mentioned, I'm not sure, is, is the property owner in question the ABC Roofing? Or is it someone else or something else?
It's the, it's the one that's, let's see, APN 17. And we do have a, conceptually, we have a deal.
Conceptually?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
There's not an easement, there's an encroachment. We need permission. So, yes.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Villanueva?
Question for the applicant. Just so you know, I'm not at a solid no. I'm just trying to do thorough analysis to make the right decision. And it, I'm on the fence because.
Is there anything I could do to help? I, I think Commissioner Rohmeyer may have said better than I said. We're talking about, you know, when you do enhancement of the area that's way up on the slope, that's disturbance and that's what's kind of confusing here.
Well, what, I mean, how do you define enhancement? Is the nat, isn't the natural, is it, so you're saying it's already been disturbed?
I'm saying the wetland area and everything that goes with that sits at the bottom. And I, I showed you those photos that kind of just pop that, that jumps out at you. That remains as it is. We're talking the area of up there on the sage. I could show one other.
Well, I think, go for it. While you do that, I just.
This one right here, you see that photo on the right in the area way above it, the dry sage area? Do you see that?
I do.
Up on the hill. So that's right where you have the grade break and then the flatland. That's where we're doing the wall and the planting.
But I think your definition of enhancement is different than mine because I would say this is beautiful as it is. And your definition of enhancement is developing on it.
It's really on the flatland. And I know there's a lot going on here with these three-dimensional things in a flat piece of paper, but.
So.
One of the things you brought up, and it's a good point, and we went around and around and around here. And I appreciate what Carter said, and I wanted to share this with you because I'm trying to acknowledge and show a lot of respect to your questioning. The, you remember he said, the, the, from a staff perspective, and that was a collective, very broad, deep, deep perspective, was the wetland, the drainage way and the hillside in that immediate area between Virginia Street and where the actual project area happens above that, across it, and then above it took precedent. And that sort of drove all of the analysis and our collaboration with staff. You see, and, and we started with trees and evolved to, because the screening thing became so significant and it relates to the AEC of which you talked about, that's code compliant, that's way more than code compliant. We were trying to avoid walls. It's not because of disturbance, there's a screening element of walls that can be a little bit stoic, right? And so you want a little softer screen and you do it with landscape. Staff wanted to be more, a little more assertive on it. And we accepted the condition and evolved to that double row plus, plus the wall.
So you initially didn't want a wall?
That's right. Yeah. That's the way we came in thinking about soft screen, you know? And I mean, it's, it's, it's a completely fair analysis and it's very much largely about, you know, about perspective.
But I mean, how, okay, well, we won't get into.
No, no, we won't. I just wanted to share you, you know, openly with some, you know.
That's helpful. I just don't know.
Some background here.
It's, I don't know that we're going to get into whether it makes sense to have it or not have it because that's.
But we're, we're fine with it, right? And the applicant's fine with it. And that's what we came to and we agree that it all has some purpose. And, and popping the foreground, which is the, again, the.
Arguably, I'd not want the wall, but I don't know the reason why staff encouraged the wall, why it's necessary to have the wall. And, okay, and so in the neighborhood, I mean, we, we're, you're, you're by, the applicant is by neighboring resident, residential. Are there walls in that area? Because if we're looking at character of the community, do you know off the top of your head whether some of the neighbors?
They're not walls. They're see-through fencing on the residential side, right?
See-through fencing? What do you mean? What type of?
You know, the ornamental fence that you can do, it's open view, right? But different purpose, right? If you buy, if you buy a, a, a house with a yard, a smaller yard, sometimes you want open view, transparent fencing.
Obviously, this is not going to get held up on the wall. It's just, when you look at the totality of kind of all of the things that we're asking for, we're mitigating this, we're asking for alternative equivalent here. We're asking for alternative equivalent here. We're dodging this, we're dodging, I mean, it's like, does it really fit here is my question? And so that's kind of where I'm held up. But if you, if we can pull up, and this will, I'll be quick because I know I've been talking a lot. If we can pull up the map, and I think this was Carter. I just need to take another look at the map with neighboring land use designations. And I think this will help. Thank you for, for the line of questioning you've answered. Okay, so this is the master plan. So we have multifamily, general commercial. And then what is the, so this is master plan. What's the land use? If you can go to the land use, the development code.
That is the land use map?
Oh, this is, okay.
Do you want to go to the previous one? That's the master plan.
This is the master plan. Okay. Huh, terrible. But, okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate it. That's all.
Do we have any, Commissioner Del VR?
Yeah, I have a couple of follow-up questions. One is, I appreciate some of the views that we've seen looking down from the Comstock community that's going in there. But I actually drove up on the other side of Tullis where some of the apartments and other complexes are. And I'm just wondering if you have a facade, if you can show what it looks like from the front? Like what the people on the other side of Virginia are going to actually see?
Carter Williams, associate. The applicant did not provide that. But I think if you, the site view analysis kind of gives an idea of what we're intending for that, in that there's these tiers of, of, I mean, I mean, the grading goes steps up. So our intent was to provide some landscape relief at the different tiers in order to provide a more seamless integration with the existing hillside that's there up, up on top above the, the tracks. So that was our intent. And that was why we were pushing so hard on the screening was because we wanted to maintain that continuity as you looked up the, that, that grade.
Got it. And then there was a slide in it show, I'm going to go back to what Sylvia's been talking about. There was a slide and it said drainage. It's in orange. I don't know which slide it is. But if you can pop through some of these slides, no, nope, nope, no, no, no.
It'll be number nine.
Oh, yeah, that one. Yeah. So, so right there, it says area of disturbance in drainage way. So I'm kind of, I'm still not understanding what the disturbance is. Because now you're talking about the trees are up here, there's a wall, but this area of disturbance is not in either of those areas.
So if you look at the, there's, I kind of covered it up unfortunately, but there are these contour lines that run based into the pavement. Those are installed grading that they're, they're doing. They're, they're, they are changing the grade of the site to allow for this development. So the, the areas of the stuff that they're actually disturbing, the ground they're disturbing, anything past that green line encroaches into that 15-foot buffer from the edge of the drainage way. And the area that is in yellow or orange is actually within that 100-year water surface elevation. So that that's actually impacting the drainage way directly. If that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Going back to commissioners on Zoom, Commissioner Draculich, Commissioner Rohmeyer, did you have any questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
I guess I'd be ready for discussion when the time comes.
Noted. Thank you. And actually on that, do we have any further questions from the commission? Or are we ready to move into discussion on this?
Ready for discussion if everyone else is, unless Villanueva?
Looks like everybody's ready to move into discussion. Commissioner Rohmeyer, do you want to start?
Sure. So, you know, this is an interesting site. It's got a lot of constraints. Obviously, having a wetland, major drainage way. I actually think that it's, you know, given it's limited, single access, although, you know, they've provided safe access by doing a circular loop within the site design. It's actually really well thought out. I actually like this much better than, say, what you see at Somerset as you come in from the western side where the storage is right up against the road. I think this has shown a lot of demonstration and thought in terms of screening. I think staff did a great job working with the applicant in this case. So, you know, the prop, the property has general commercial zoning. It has a master plan designation in place. It's adjacent to industrial, which is the vision for the future to the north. This is Virginia Street. This is not a suburban neighborhood. I, I think this is a really good fit and I hope my fellow commissioners can see that as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you have any further comments from the commission? Commissioner Becerra?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. I'll echo Commissioner Rohmeyer's sentiments there. No project is ever perfect coming in. Y'all have heard my personal opinions about storage units in the past. But regardless, you know, I want that kind of cloud what's presented to us and what's proposed by staff and the applicants. And I do want to say that Carter and the rest of the staff always do a good job working with the applicants to, to make something better. And I do think that that's the case here to, to address the concerns, both environmental, residential and some of the other areas that we consider when reviewing these projects. I also want to give a personal note of appreciation to Commissioner Villanueva to my left. I think her line of questioning is critical and also strives to make our projects better. So thank you for that and thank you, everyone else.
And Commissioner? Further discussion? Commissioner Villanueva?
Sure, yeah. I, so while I disagree that this project makes the site better, I don't, I mean, I think part of, you know, in addition to some of the constraints of the site, I think part of the reason why I had, so I am having such a hard time is because some of the spot zoning, and that's not the fault of the applicant. That's the fault of kind of the decisions that have come before us and have resulted in the mess that you see up there with industrial, near residential, near suburban mixed use, near. And again, so given what it is and given the circumstances, I don't think it's an enhancement, but I don't, I, you know, I think it's a, the applicant, I think, I, I, I can, I feel fine moving forward with a yes. It's not great, but I think they've worked within the confines. Again, I, were the circumstances different? but I think they've worked within the confines. Again, I, were the circumstances different? Were some of the decisions that have come before us not resulting in what we have here with some of the zoning, my decision may be different. But it's hard for me to say it doesn't fit into the character of the community when the community, there's no character. It lacks character. So I feel like I have to be a yes in that case. But, yeah, tough choice. Thank you.
Commissioner Draculich, did you have any discussion?
Oh, good, boss.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Del VR, did you have any discussion?
I just kind of want to echo what Commissioner Villanueva is talking about. For me, it's, you know, I understand it. It's a very, it's a very strange location. It's skinny. You've got all kinds of different constraints. And I think that, you know, as we in the city look at, you know, planning and some of the use cases and conditions we're putting in place, it's just, this is a good example to like, look back on and say this, maybe this wasn't the best, yeah, I don't know, situation. And hopefully it'll help us plan better in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner. Wrap up discussion. You know, I think it's fairly black and white, given the, the code considerations, the master plan considerations that we have. I do commend the applicant and staff for coming up with a solution to try and make this workable. I think, given kind of the allowable uses in the area, as well as some of the real world constraints, this makes a lot of sense, given what, you know, given kind of the, the single point of entry and some of the other kind of issues that, that came up. You know, it, it is an appropriate development. I think they've had kind of the proper mitigants put in place. So I'll be supporting it, but understand, you know, maybe some of the other comments about the, the area being, you know, sort of piecemeal together and not as straightforward as, as maybe some other areas that we see. But with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Happy to make the motion, Chair. But I will rely on the assistance of the esteemed staff.
Can we please get the motion back on the, on the teleprompter, please?
All right. Thanks, crew. It's on the lower ones. I'll do my best. Shoot. Let me get the case number. In the matter of LDC 24-00065, Virginia Village Self-Storage, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit and alternative equivalent compliance subject to conditions. And I can make the findings.
Commissioner, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Draculich, I second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yo.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your project. We will now close item 4.1 and move to item 4.2, LDC 25-00009, Need to Speed. And it looks like we'll get a presentation from staff.
All righty. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Tristen Rodriguez, Assistant Planner for the Record. Tristen pronounced like Preston, but with the T. And I'm bringing before you the third case of the night, LDC 25-00009, Need to Speed. This developed 18.1-acre parcel is generally located east of US Highway 395 North, approximately 130 feet south of its intersection with North McCarran Boulevard. The subject site is part of the existing North Town Marketplace Shopping Center. This request seeks a conditional use permit to permit the establishment of a bar, lounge, or tavern, along with outside amusement or recreation activities on a parcel-zoned general commercial GC. The immediate surrounding land uses include, but are not limited to, multifamily residential to the south, restaurants, general retail stores, and general personal service uses to the north and east, and the aforementioned US 395 North to the west. The key issues are compatibility with surrounding uses and operational impacts. The zoning district is general commercial GC, which is intended to accommodate a mix of established low-intensity auto-oriented uses, while supporting the gradual transition of the city's suburban corridors to a mix of high-density residential, retail, commercial, and other employment and service-oriented uses. The master plan land use designation is suburban mixed use, and here are a handful of goals and policies that are supported by and support the proposed project. Regarding the issues that staff looked at was compatibility with surrounding land uses. While the surrounding land uses are mostly developed as commercial uses, the subject parcel does share a common property line with the North Town Summit Apartments shown here. While the majority of the proposed improvements are located inside the existing tenant space, there is also an outdoor amusement and recreation area proposed with the improvements. This outdoor area is located a significant distance from the North Town Summit Apartments. Typical operational impacts associated with bars and outdoor entertainment and amusement uses include nuisance and patron behavioral issues, cleanliness and orderliness issues, security, and noise. In an effort to mitigate potential conflicts with existing businesses and apartments, condition number five requires all patron queuing in and out of the business shall be through a single primary entrance, with the exception of emergency situations. Condition number six requires patrons awaiting entrance, as well as those leaving the establishment, to be monitored as to not create a nuisance by obstructing the sidewalk in the area of the business or adjacent businesses. And they shall also have security personnel, or, excuse me, security personnel shall also be stationed outside to enforce order. Condition number seven requires the operator to ensure that all adjacent sidewalks, curbs, and gutters are cleaned prior to closing, and all litter and debris be removed at closing. And condition number eight requires a security plan to be submitted and approved by the zoning administrator, code enforcement, and Reno PD. So what you're looking at now is the floor plan that was submitted to the city. I understand in this view, it's hard to capture all of its contents. In the subsequent slides, I will provide an in-depth section of each building and outline the, the triggers which is, which has this item before the body. So as that outlines, the two green squares represent the bar, lounge, or tavern areas. The blue outline represents the outdoor amusement and recreation area. Those are the reasons why this item is before the body. In other words, if the applicant had no intentions of a bar, and if they removed this outdoor amusement recreation component from their proposal, all items indicated on the site plan are uses permitted by right in the general commercial zoning district. Okay, so let me help you orient yourself. In the bottom right-hand corner is the site plan from the previous slide. The red square represents the section of the site plan that we're looking at on the left here. And as I did in the previous slide, I've outlined those triggers. Again, the bar area circled in green and the outdoor amusement recreation area in blue. Again, using the site plan, or the floor plan in the bottom right-hand corner, we moved a bit south in the building. As you can see, there is a bar area. That's the main bar area adjacent to the indoor track. All right. And this slide is the last section of the floor plan. As you can see, there is no, there are no triggers for a CUP within this section. Now, as I've gone through the past three slides, some of you may have seen things like go-karts, restaurants, duck pen bowling. The go-karts, mini golf areas, from a use perspective, are classified as indoor amusement and recreation, which in the general commercial zoning district is a use permitted by right, with no discretionary review required. The same goes for a restaurant. Here are the conditional use permit recommended findings, and staff can make all findings. And here is the recommended motion, and both I and the applicant are available for questions.
Great. Thanks so much for your presentation. Do we have a presentation from the applicant on this item as well?
Okay, great. All right. My name is Chris Hurtgar. I'm the owner of Need to Speed. We are an indoor family entertainment, or indoor karting center, family entertainment center. We're located in South Reno currently. We've been there for 12 years now. We're looking to relocate and expand, and this is the plan that we have in front of you. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the floor plan because Tristen did a great job of that. So I'll show you some renderings, our attractions, our menu. And then there were a couple of comments that came in ahead of time. Address those and answer any questions you have. So Need to Speed. Like I said, we've been here for 10 years, more than 10 years. Our new location will have a multi-level go-kart track. I believe that's the only one in the entire state of Nevada. 12 lanes of duck pen bowling, completely revamped nine-hole mini golf course, 50- to 60-piece arcade, full-service restaurant and bar. And then we'll have a private event space for meetings, conferences, whatever. And of course, we're planning to repurpose the old Walmart Garden Center into an outdoor patio with long games. We're going to skip back because Tristen knocked that out of the park. There is a rendering of the mini golf area with the bar that services both indoor and the outdoor patio area. This is the main entrance where people check in. That heads down into the arcade area. At the end of the arcade is the restaurant, sampling of the menu. Although, Gabe, that's not up to date because we don't have the carne asada tacos on there yet. But, and then we'll have also larger catering options for large events. The 12 lanes of duck pen bowling, two of them on either side for semi-private events. And finally, the outdoor patio area. So prior, during the public comment period, we did get a few concerns. Just want to talk about how we see that. So some were regarding traffic in the area, security, queuing. You know, this was built as a Walmart supercenter, and us combined with our neighbors, Planet Fitness, Ross, and Floor &amp; Decor will never be as busy as the Walmart supercenter was. I wish we were, but we just won't be. And then prior to that was a tele-performance call center, and they had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cubicles lined up because they were still there when I first toured the building. And we've converted about a third of the space into a go-kart track that will have a maximum of 30 people in that area. And then we've torn out a bunch of other and put in bowling lanes. So our peak capacity will be far lower than, than was the prior use. And obviously, our restaurant seating is a little less dense than their cubicle farm was too because, you know, it's just nicer that way. And then obviously, as mentioned, we are going to have to develop a security plan, and we're perfectly willing to do that. We are going to have dedicated security on the weekends. We will have somebody at the front door checking on guests every single minute that we're open. Our feedback we got was regarding bar, lounge, or tavern. Again, we're not, we don't consider ourselves a bar, lounge, or tavern. We're a family entertainment center, right? We want you to come there, have fun, bring kids, grandkids, have a birthday party, come for a graduation party, have a fundraiser, whatever, have a team-building event. You guys should all come down and have an event yourselves, right? That's who we are. But like any other place that is a full-service restaurant, we will have alcohol services available to people who want that. So, but anyways, that's the actual permitting language, bar, lounge, or tavern. We're a family entertainment center. And then also too, I just saw that, where there were some concerns about, you know, people leaving a bar and being intoxicated and whatnot. We're very cognizant of that because we need to monitor that for our own use. For insurance purposes, we need to make sure that nobody drives our go-karts while under the influence of anything, right? And so we are very aware of anyone who might be under the influence, whether that is, you know, from something they consumed on our premises, or if they already arrived drunk at our doorstep, right? So it happens both ways. And so we're going to be very cognizant of that at all times. And then finally, regarding noise in the patio, we're just planning four small speakers outside for some ambient music so that people can, you know, listen to music while they're out there playing cornhole as opposed to listening to the drone when cars go by on 395. So. And then kind of last, I would say, you know, we, as we were going through some of the concerns that we got from the community, I, at one point, I just kind of stopped and laughed and said, you know, they're worried about us queuing line people around the door and causing traffic jams and stuff. And like, if we were even half as successful as they're afraid we're going to be, I'd be thrilled. But I just don't think it's going to happen. You know, just last week, literally ran into two people very close to where our current location is, and they had never been there, even though they had heard of us. So we're going to try and drag as many people as we possibly can to that area, but it's a fight every day, and we don't anticipate having any, any major impact other than revitalizing an old vacant space and bringing a fun event center to the, to the community. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for your presentation. We'll now bring it back to the commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Villanueva, please start.
Commissioner Villanueva, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Becerra, I attended the Neighborhood Advisory Board meeting that the gentleman presented at. I grew up in the neighborhood and remember when the area was developed as North Town, so I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Del VR, I am familiar with the site.
Commissioner Draculich, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Romeyer, no disclosures.
Commissioner Armstrong, I'm familiar with the site. We'll now move on to public comment. I have no request to speak forums. Is there anyone wishing to speak via Zoom?
We don't have anyone in Zoom, but we do have a voicemail we are going to play. We did also receive correspondence that was forwarded to the Planning Commission and entered into the record.
Sounds good. You can play the voicemail whenever you're ready.
All right.
Hi, I live over here on Clearacre and McCarron. I've seen a public notice today next to, on North Town Lane next to the Planet Fitness, that there's a proposed bar going in next door. We are, there's already a bar in that, in that mall, in that strip mall, the Dottie's over there on, on North Town. And there's another bar at Clearacre and McCarron. I don't think adding another bar to this neighborhood is going to be conducive to how we want to see our community grow. You know, we have a bunch of kids here. It's a very busy parking lot, a lot of elderly folks. You know, adding people that are drinking to the mix is probably a really bad idea. As well as, we have a huge homeless population here, gang members. It's already going downhill. Let's not add to that. I'm going to have all of my neighbors also call and leave a comment. It just doesn't need to happen in this neighborhood. It, it's not going to be an added benefit to have more drunk people driving in an overwhelmed traffic area. So, my name is Connie. My phone number is 775-303-1106.
That's all the public comment we have for this item.
Thank you. Before we close public comment, do we have anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Bring it back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Becerra, please.
Oh, you know it. Thank you, Chair. I guess for staff, I want to make sure I'm pronouncing your name correctly. Tristen?
Correct.
Great, great to have you. Is this the first time we have you?
Yes, sir.
Great, well, welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
The staff report indicates that the applicant will be required to submit a security plan prior to the business license being issued. Would you mind elaborating on what specific criteria the security plan must meet and how the city will ensure that it remains enforced after the business opens?
Absolutely. So this year, the security plan is required to address security staffing and procedures, queuing of patrons, hours of operation, exterior lighting, and procedures to prevent loitering outside of the business.
All right, fantastic.
And prior to approval of that business license, we're going to ensure that we have that plan and it's been reviewed.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. I'll hold a couple more questions until later.
Understood. Commissioner Villanueva?
Hi, Tristen. Hi, Tristen. I think we met when I was picking up an agenda packet.
Yes.
So, good to see you up here.
Likewise.
So, can you confirm if we, so is the application for a bar, lounge, or tavern with, so the application has to be with the recreation or amusement? So if we were to approve this, and then in a year they decided they wanted to sell, would the entitlement include just a general bar lounge? Or would that, the next buyer have to, in order to have that entitlement, have to have the amusement park?
So each of these, the bar, lounge, or tavern, and the outdoor amusement recreation component would require the need for approval of a CUP. If the applicant were to sell, the land would be entitled. And so the next applicant would not have to apply, and they would be allowed both of those uses.
Would they be, would the next buyer be obligated to have the amusement recreation with the? with the bar, or could they just have the bar without the amusement? And like, say, for example, I don't know, I'm trying to think of something, another just pub wanted to go in there without the amusement. Could they do that?
Yeah, it is not a requirement for them to do both of those things. The land is just entitled in the event that they want to do both of those things.
So they wouldn't need the amusement. They could just have the bar lounge?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I could add one thing to that, they would still be subject to all the conditions that are placed on this project. Those, the conditions of approval associated with the CP would also carry forward to any, any new bar use.
Okay, thank you.
Including that security plan.
Don't want to forget about commissioners on Zoom. Commissioner Draculich, do you have any questions?
All good, buddy. Thank you.
Commissioner Rohrmeier, any questions at this time?
Nope.
Okay, bring it back. Commissioner DelVR, did you have a question?
Nope, just some comments later.
Sounds good. Commissioner Becerra, I think you had a few more questions.
Sure, just to follow up. Tristan, I'm going to ask the applicant to come up if that's all right. Howdy.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Good to see you again.
Too well, yeah, likewise. Yeah, how will, how will you handle noise complaints from neighboring residents, particularly during times when you're hosting events? Will there be designated staff or other measures in place?
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously, prevention is the, the main part. So as you kind of see here on the slide that's right there, on the south wall, where the outdoor areas, we're actually building a wall. So it's currently just a fenced scenario, but we're going to enclose that with a wall that'll be a bit of a sound shield. Then the kitchen also juts out that direction, making another sound shield. And then there's an existing wall between us and the apartments to the south, which is the only place I anticipate a potential noise complaint coming from, because I got freeway, 395, the Home Depot, and ourselves on the other three sides. But in the event that there's a, you know, a noise complaint, it depends what the nature is. Is it people yelling and screaming? That won't happen because we will have security. Is it the music's too loud? We can turn it down. And literally, all four speakers can be adjusted, you know, individually too. So if it's like the one that's pointed to the south is too loud, we can adjust that. So yeah, I mean, we'll have to take it on a, on a case-by-case basis, but it's 312 feet, and we've had three barriers between us and, and the apartments to the south, so we hope that it's not an issue. And if it is, we will address it.
Thank you so much. I do want to just take a moment to say thank you for how you presented, you know, what you're planning to do here. And equally important, maybe what you're doing, or not just. We heard a lot of bar taverns and so forth, but I think you mentioned that you're more of a family entertainment center. Is that right?
Yeah, absolutely. So I mean, I have a teenage daughter, and I intend to let her go and run around this place, you know, unchaperoned. So yeah, I mean, that's the type of place we want to be. So which is very different than kind of what was described, so.
Yeah, and I believe you guys have a good reputation down south.
I like to think so.
Yeah, so thank you so much, and appreciate your presentation.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And Commissioner, do you have any further questions from the commission, or do we want to move into discussion? Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Yes, quick question, sorry, for staff. I'm looking at this. I don't, so the surrounding areas, the commenter, public commenter said that there was some other gaming and, not gaming, sorry, taverns, bars. I don't see any. Is there any that you're aware of? Because I don't see a Dottie's in this.
So there, there are several businesses in the area. There's, it's adjacent to the Planet Fitness, Flooring Liquidators, there's a Ross, the Winco Foods. I'm not aware of any other bars in that particular area off the top of my head currently, but I will say there, there are several restaurants that may include bar, bar or alcohol service. But specifics, I cannot confirm at that, at this time.
Okay, thank you. No more, no more questions.
And Commissioner, any further questions before we move into discussion? Seeing none, I think we'll move into discussion. Commissioner DelVR, I think you had mentioned you had comments.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you again for your presentation, and thank you, Tristan, for your diligent work on this. I, there, there is a Dottie's, but it's on the others, it's on a different street, and I don't really consider that like a bar. I think there was a lot of misinformation out there about this. I heard people, you know, I talked to people and they were like, you know, there's, they're going to have concerts that go all night. And I'm like, I don't, that's not what's happening. And so I appreciate you coming here and explaining what it is. And, and I appreciate you moving into North Alley's area where I think this would be, you know, appreciated. You know, I think the noise is a concern, but it's against 395, which is probably noisier than anything we would get from the location itself. And so I, I think this is a good, a good use of that space. I also, in the, in just, you know, the presentation, the yellow mark showed the parking lot too. And so I thought maybe it was going to move out more into the parking lot, but I appreciate you defining what, it's just staying in the same space that exists now. And then also, that is a really interesting space because it goes behind. So like where Walmart was, the garden area, and then behind it is where like, I think their tire places, which I think is where the go-kart area is going. So, but I think the way that you've set it up would work really well in that space. So that was all I had to say.
Great, thanks so much for your comments. Commissioners on Zoom, Commissioner Draculich, did you have any comments?
So thank you.
Commissioner Rohrmeier, anything?
Yeah, just kudos for, you know, reusing an empty large space that not many tenants could fill.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Becerra?
Great, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm a fan. I think this is great. I think I mentioned earlier that I grew up in the neighborhood, so I've seen every iteration of that space. And I think this is a fantastic use. I also appreciate the public sentiment that came in, but also how the staff and applicant addressed those concerns and clarified how it's not just a bar tavern, but more of a family entertainment center, which frankly, we probably would need more of. And it's cool to have that type of usage on this side instead of having to always go to Sparks, to the, to, you know, Wild Waters and Coconut Bowl, which are cool, but it's kind of farther away for folks on this side. So yeah, fantastic.
And Commissioner, Commissioner Villanueva?
Thank you. To the public commenter, I appreciate the comments. I don't see any issues. It seems like there is one Dottie's, but I just don't see there being any issues with the character of the community being compromised because of the approval of this application. On, you know, to, as an aside, I want to echo Commissioner Rohrmeier filling the space, but also, you know, this is not something really in our purview, but I just want to comment on it. The, so I appreciate the use. I don't know if everyone's heard, but Surgeon General recently released information health advisory for parents, basically saying parents are under the most stress that they've been. And part of the reason for that is they spend a lot more time with their kids in spaces like this, in a good way, but it's just caused more stress certainly than generations past. But I think this is a great way to kind of alleviate some of that stress. And I appreciate the, the application being part of that community. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before entertaining a motion, I'll just throw my two cents in. I think it's a great project. I commend the applicant and staff. It's Commissioner Rohrmeier's point, filling these old kind of Walmart, Kmart, super center type of uses is difficult. And I think that this is actually a great use for the area. I'll be supporting the project and, you know, good luck. I hope you're more successful than you anticipate being. I, I hope the community appreciates the service, you know, that you'd be providing with your business. And Tristan, great presentation. I don't know if this is your first presentation at Planning Commission, but it's the first presentation I've seen, and just appreciate your preparedness. You're very concise, very eloquent. So thanks again. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Happy to.
Commissioner Villanueva?
Thank you. With regard to application LDC 2500009, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit subject to the conditions lifted, listed in the staff report.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Commissioner Becerra, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your project. We'll now close item four and move to item five, zoning code discussion. And it looks like we'll get a presentation from staff.
Chair, would it be possible to take a quick break, or do we anticipate this being lengthy?
I think that's appropriate. I think a five-minute break is, is okay. Sorry to jump the gun there. So we will reconvene at 7:45.
You're right, you're right.
Five zoning code discussion, we will get a presentation from staff.
Okay, thank you for the record Angela Foose Assistant Director with Development Services. Tonight, we're going to be talking about a specific text amendment related to signs. Now, I would like to maybe just start the presentation by acknowledging we have a lot of public comment that came in. One thing that I will acknowledge is that there was a lot of misinformation out there. And so I'm hoping that through today's presentation, I can better educate the public and help educate the planning commission. So that you can then make some decisions or some provide some feedback based on facts rather than a lot of the misinformation that is out there. So let's start with where we're at with the zoning code cleanup versus where we're at with the sign code text amendment. Now, they both started at the same time when we met with council back in June of 2022, so over two years ago. We were talking about the zoning code and some big things that we had to clean up and then just big picture the zoning code cleanup. So they initiated a series of different text amendments. One of them was specific to the code cleanup. Again, that's the the big picture stuff. We're I think up to 500 now different changes that we're making related to high level zoning code cleanup. Other than that, we have more specific sign code text amendment. Now, when we adopted our code, our major code in 2021, it was acknowledged that we should do a separate text amendment related to signs. We also acknowledge that there's typically a lot of kind of high level legal issues associated with a sign code. So we should probably include an attorney as part of that discussion. So that was something that our staff, we said, we don't want to take on that. There's a lot of responsibility to make sure we're meeting all the rules and regulations at the federal level. So we said, we want to do that with the help of a consultant. So again, both of those two separate items were kicked off at the same time. We initially started by with the sign code specifically, we hired the consultant. And then we went out and we did what we call like an initial just kind of feedback from the stakeholders. We met with scenic Nevada, we met with the billboard industry, we met with the sign industry, meaning the companies that actually submit sign permits. And the intent was for those of you that have used our sign code, we want to know what you like, what you don't like. There's a lot of things from a staff perspective that doesn't work. There's a lot of things in our sign code that staff says, holy cow, I don't know what was intended. I don't know what this means. Let's clean that up. So again, in talking to all the different specific sign code or sign stakeholders, we put a list together of those big picture items. Now, separate from that, we also said, well, let's work on the zoning code update. And there were some key things that we said, well, related to signs, what do we need to fix high level quickly right now on our zoning code text amendment? We always knew that those would be two separate processes. We felt the sign code was probably going to take us a couple of years to get through versus the zoning code cleanup. We thought that that would be much quicker. It's kind of been the opposite. Our zoning code cleanup is now in the multi-year process. It was kind of halted when we went to council and they said, take everything out dealing with affordable housing and focus on that. Do that as a separate text amendment. So that took us about six months. So with all of this, we definitely have had this overlap of things that we've talked about with signs as part of the zoning code cleanup and things that we're talking about specific to the sign code. So what we're going to do is anything related to changes to signs, we're pulling out of the zoning code cleanup. So that discussion, we're just going to put on hold, anything we talked about, we're going to pull out and make it specific to this sign code text amendment. So that is the red line document that's in front of you today. Again, it was very high level, small things we want to change and a deeper dive, things we want to change. So again, we met with the stakeholders in the spring of 2023, about a year and a half ago. We went back and here's kind of the outcome of that initial meeting. Well, there's a series of I think three different meetings. But number one is we have a table, it's a sign table and it's confusing and needs to be simplified. So number one, that was kind of unified, anyone that uses our sign code said, yeah, simplify it, just make it easier to understand. Secondly, there was a lot of just formatting, unclear language, just inconsistencies. We have sections in our sign code that conflict with other sections of our zoning code. So we said, it's an inconsistency, clean that up. And then a lot of things, again, from a staff perspective, we don't know what that was supposed to mean. So we went back and we said, let's clean it. If you ask a planner a question and you ask another planner the same question, we should get the same answer. And so as we've been kind of working on these red lines, we've been doing some test cases. We'll throw out a question to our planning staff and say, here's the same question, send me your answer. And if we're getting different answers, we knew we haven't dealt with it correctly. So we, again, we've really tried to hone this in to make sure our staff understands how to read it. And then finally, content neutrality, this is where the attorneys really helped us. You know, when you deal with content neutrality, that is something more at a federal level that we should be looking at signs for certain things. Certain things we are not supposed to be looking at. So they gave us some verbiage to help make us sure, make sure that we're meeting federal regulations. Now with that, we initially talked about kind of stripping the entire zone, the sign code and starting fresh. But again, after we held those stakeholder meetings, we realized we don't need to strip this and start fresh. So there's some things that maybe we're okay with. So scenic Nevada in particular said, do not touch the off premise regulations. This is anything related to billboards. There's a long history of lawsuits and battles. And so the way that our code is written now, specific to billboards, scenic Nevada said they like and we shouldn't make changes to. So again, what we're not doing is not making changes to anything related to billboards. We also had a lot of previous discussions with council related to animated signs, where we allow them, how bright they can be. We call that nits. There was multiple text amendments on this topic and so we're not touching that. Lot of discussions with council that had happened and occurred. So we're not breaking open that Pandora's box, we're going to leave it as is. And then finally, on gas stations, there was a lot of previous discussions and text amendments related to those gas station signs. The ones that have like the digital signs where how many times a day can you change them? There's NRS regulations, so state regulations related to gas station signs, we're not proposing to open that. We're going to leave it as is. So we wanted to go through and highlight just a couple of the key things that we're looking at as part of the code cleanup related to signs. So number one, when we adopted this code in 2021, we changed some of our zoning districts. And inadvertently, we did not include five separate zoning districts in our sign table. So that table on the right is just an example of what's in code today. As you can see, we dictate the size of a sign and the area of a sign based on what your zoning district is. And so we missed the mixed use airport, which is similar to industrial, so we've added that back in. Parks, greenways and open space, it's a zoning district that we typically use for parks. We've added that back in. And you may think, well, why do you need sign regulations for parks, greenways and open space if it's just parks? Most of our parks do have some kind of sign, it's usually like a monument sign, just more of the name of the park. So we added some regulations to make sure we have rules of how big those signs can be. And then there's three categories for what we call unincorporated transition. These are the larger lots, five acres, 10 acres and 40 acres. It's really kind of a mix between the city and where the unincorporated Washoe County are. So again, that kind of outer area. And we still need sign regulations. A lot of those types of zoning districts have businesses, maybe they do horse boarding. We have some some winery type vineyard type places. So we actually do need sign regulations for every single zoning category that we have. So again, clean that up, just made sure now we actually can say, no matter what zoning districts you're in, we have rules. Another basic one was just definitions. We found that we mentioned the word monument sign quite a bit in our sign code. But we don't define what a monument sign is. And so we would have projects come in and they would show a pole sign. Or they would show some other type of sign because we didn't define what monument was. Staff had a hard time saying, well, what are the rules then? How tall can it be and how wide can it be? So we added a definition. We also had some just kind of cleanups, I would say, to freestanding signs and what's considered freestanding. Now, there's different types of signs, there's signs that go on walls, we call those wall signs. There are signs that are separate and the two pictures there are those freestanding type signs, whether they're a monument style on top or a pole sign on bottom, but we still count those as freestanding. And so we better defined what those are. And then content neutrality, this is the one where we worked with our consultant and had them help us come up with some language. The one thing we are not supposed to look at is what's on the sign. We can look at the size of the sign. We can look at again, what zoning district's in to figure out, should, are they allowed to have a wall sign? Are they allowed to have a freestanding sign, those things we can look at. But we're not supposed to look at the content of the sign. We can look at if the sign is advertising on premise or off premise. So as an example, let's say you have a McDonald's. You have a sign out front that's advertising for Target. We can look at the content and say, whoa, 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 that's considered off premise. If you're McDonald's, you can only advertise for McDonald's, you can't advertise for some other business. So this again, kind of clarifies what we can and can't look at. There's a couple of areas I just wanted to highlight as examples. There's many things that we have difficulty implementing, but here's a couple of key ones that I wanted to go over. Again, this is just a small snapshot of what is in our zoning code today. As an example, this NC zoning, so that's a neighborhood, neighborhood commercial zoning district. So if you go over the table and say, okay, I can have so much freestanding sign, meaning the height of my sign, how big my sign is. And then when it comes to the wall area, so there's some language here, kind of makes sense. Okay, I can have one square foot of wall signage for every hundred gross floor area of the building. So basically you have to measure the size of the building, then you divide it by 100 and that's how many square feet of wall sign you get. Okay, fine with that. Highlighted area then, so all signs combined shall not exceed 400 square feet per parcel. Well, that may seem to make sense, where we ran into problems is shopping centers, zone neighborhood commercial. So let's say you have a shopping center and it has 20 different businesses, it's all on one parcel. And this is saying that one parcel with those 20 different businesses only gets 400 square feet of signage. And what we found is over time, new tenants come in, they go out, the ability for us to track every single business over time has become very, very difficult. It's also fair to say that 400 square feet of wall sign goes very, very quickly. And so you're basically saying, if you came in late to the game, or maybe you're a tenant that has not been there for very long, there's a chance you wouldn't be allowed any wall sign at all because that 400 square feet per parcel has been exceeded. So we said, whoa, 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 let's clean that up. Let's just make sure everybody gets a minimum square footage. We don't want to have a site that has no sign allowed. So at a minimum, and again, in that neighborhood commercial zoning, you would get a minimum of 40 square feet per business. Another area is related to our public facility zoning PF. I'm sorry, maximum.
Minimum, oh, okay.
It should be maximum. No, uh, no, I'm sorry, it's minimum, I take that back. So again, you still have to meet all the codes. So depending on the size of your building, you would get a minimum square footage. But if there's, if there's no square footage left, because every other business has used all the wine, the wall sign square footage, you are entitled to something.
But it's still based on the parcel?
Yes.
Not based on the number of businesses?
Nope. So and we've, we've completely revamped that whole section, but this is an example of why we had to revamp it. We no longer measuring square foot per 100 gross floor area, that also didn't make sense to us. So we, the way we measure it, propose to measure it for a wall sign is based on your business frontage. So you would measure how wide of a building you have and you would get basically one square foot per lineal frontage.
Like tenant building or so say you have like, so for example, the applicant we had earlier, there was a bunch of businesses, different tenants. So explain that, so it doesn't matter how many tenants, it just depends?
Yep, so that would be a great example. So let's say Need for Speed is in there and Winko is in there and whatever else they said, Ross is in there. So each business is going to come in for their own signage and when they come in.
With you guys?
For a sign permit.
Okay, got it, okay.
So when they come in, we would say, well, show us how much business frontage you have. And that determines how much wall sign you get. So if you have a really narrow, small business, you don't get much wall signage. But at a minimum, you should at least get 40 square feet. The bigger frontage you have, the more square feet you have.
So what's the enforcement tool for like anytime someone rents out leases a space from like a larger tenant? The tenant has to advise them that they need to go get approval, pre-approval or does the tenant have, that seems like hard to enforce.
Every sign is required to have a sign permit. So that is just like a building code, if you're going to build a house, you have to go through a building permit. If you're going to put up a sign, you have to have a sign permit.
Okay, so I guess if a large tenant say, well, I guess, okay, the, oh, okay. Let me think about this, so like Need for Speed, they're a tenant, but the parcels, they're all separate. So, okay, got it, thank you.
Did you have a question as well?
No, I was just thinking with Need for Speed, because it is a good example, because they have a pretty short front. But they have a wider back and then they have that, what was the outdoor garden area? But they would be held to a minimum of 40 feet, most likely, because they have a very narrow front.
And the challenge with that too is, you know, the bigger, wider building you have, the more square footage you have, the more we're going to see. So you want to make it, the sign should be proportional to the size of your building. What we don't want to see is, you know, a really tiny building coming in with this giant sign. So we make it at a minimum, you at least get 40 square feet, so everybody gets something. But if you have a wider frontage, then you get more signage. We do cap it, so there's a cap of 400 square feet per building, so a great example. It's not, it's a different zoning, but let's just say Whole Foods, let's assume Whole Foods was zoned neighborhood commercial. They're not, but use that as pretend. So Whole Foods has two sides, they have two frontages. One frontage, I think is about 360 feet long. The other frontage, I think is about 300 feet long. My numbers might be off, but generally speaking then, okay, so based on how long their frontage is, and they have two, they would get a lot of signage. But again, we're going to cap it at 400 square feet. So you add up your total frontage and you get, you know, one square foot per per lineal foot of frontage with a cap.
Angela, quick question, is the 400 just something from best practices or how did y'all just kind of come up with that number?
It was in the code from, again, the last 20 years worth. And so we said, all right, well, I haven't heard a lot of complaints about 400 square foot being the cap. So we're going to keep that number.
Is there a business that has one at 400 square feet?
Oh, I'm sure, I mean, there's thousands of businesses.
400, okay.
And again, use, use Whole Foods as your example, right? If they are 360 feet in length on one side, they would be allowed a sign that could be potentially up to 400 square feet. Okay, so that was again, just kind of one example where we said, this doesn't make sense, let's clean that up. So another example of what we were calling just more of this doesn't make sense, let's fix this, public facility zoning. So you see a lot of churches zoned public facility, a lot of schools. We also have quite a few businesses. This could be anything from a hair salon to an office type use. So it's not just what you would think is public facility. There's a lot of commercial type uses that are allowed in that public facility zoning. So we actually see a lot of signage come in zoned public facility. So the way it's written today, I wanted to highlight the area in yellow, it says for a freestanding sign. So this is a sign that's not on a wall, this is a sign that's outside in your, let's say, front yard. Six foot monument established by conditional use permit. Now, depending on how you read that, is six foot monument the max? And do you have to get a conditional use permit to get that? Or is it saying you can go up to six feet and anything beyond that is a conditional use permit? So again, this is something that for years has been in code and we've said, I don't know, depending on who you ask, you get different answer. So let's just stop doing that and clean it up so it's black and white, what are the rules? Now, we looked at PF zoning and the types of businesses that are allowed. It's very similar to businesses that we would allow in a neighborhood commercial zoning or a professional office zoning. So we tried to make them more consistent. In those other two zoning districts, we also allow eight foot tall monument signs. We said, okay, just to be consistent, that seems to make sense. And then in terms of the square footage, so if you look to that category kind of to the right, where it says 15% of allowed wall sign area. And I'm like, okay, so what does that mean? So my freestanding sign can be 15% of a wall sign. Well, what do they allow for wall signs? We allow 12 or 10 square feet per acre, per acre of parcel or per acre of building? What are we talking about? Again, none of this makes sense. If I ask five different people, you guys will all give me five different answers, so let's clean that up. So we made it consistent to match more with what you would see in a neighborhood commercial or professional office. Knowing that, again, public facility has a lot of businesses. So we're giving 60 square feet, that's the maximum square footage they would get for a freestanding sign. And again, that's not shown here because I wasn't highlighting that, but if you read the red lines or the staff report, it goes into more detail. And then we cleaned up just that whole area to say, gosh, you know, how do we make this make sense? Again, 10 square feet per acre of what? That doesn't make sense either, so we cleaned all that language up. We also said, so should every sign in public facility zoning trigger a conditional use permit? We don't currently read it that way, depending on who you are, you may. So we said, no, 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 this is what you get by right. Let's take out this additional, if you want additional signage, you go through a conditional use permit. No, no, here's the code, here's the rules, nothing new, nothing on top of that. So cleaned it up, so this is what you would be allowed to do by right, any business owned public facility.
So just clarity on that Angela, using your example, you said the six foot monument, that's old now, or at least proposing to be old. Someone could get an eight foot tall monument, anything beyond that would trigger the conditional process?
No, we have deleted the ability to do anything above that.
Okay.
We felt that it's weird that in public facility, we allowed you to expand that with a conditional use permit. Where in other zoning districts, there is no allowance to go bigger. And a conditional use permit is not even the right tool to use, you know, that would be more of, I want to deviate from code. So that would either be a variance and you have to show there's a hardship. It is very, very hard to get a hardship for a sign to go bigger. Or you could do a major deviation, but again, we don't get a lot of requests to do variances for signs because we pretty much recommend denial for most of them.
Okay, and so. And so, you know, fast forward to the future, at the end of the day, folks will be able to, like in your department, would be able to reference the same source of truth, if you will, and be able to give folks, anyone, the same answer to the same question.
Yes. And the idea is that any business owner could hopefully now go to our code and understand what it says. This, nobody understands what it says. So we tried to clean that up to be across the board, consistent. Here's the rules that everybody gets if you're in the PF zoning district. Here's how tall you can go, here's your square footage. If you want a wall sign, here's the rules on wall signs.
Quick question in terms of signage that exists today, is that all sort of grandfathered in?
Yes. Yep. The key to that is you have to have a sign permit that we approved. So it can't be something, we have people, you know, businesses that put up signs without a sign permit. So we don't go actively looking at signs that are permitted or not, but if a neighbor complains, there's a code enforcement case, and we cite them and say, submit a permit. So if we have a situation where you can show, we have the backup, we have the history, because we do all the sign permits, we can show that we approved it at one time, it was legal, so it'd be legal nonconforming. You can't expand it. The size that you have today is the size that you have to live with, unless this allows you for more square footage.
Say a football field, public facility, at a high school, what are those scoring boards? Are they not eight feet? I don't know how tall they are, they seem like they'd be-
We wouldn't consider that a sign, because they're not advertising anything, they're showing numbers.
That's fair. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the next kind of big topic that we're trying to clean up is all of our footnotes. Again, if you look at our zoning code, we have this long sign table, and at the end of it, we have these 13 different footnotes. And I think the problem with this is, these have been in our code for two decades, and maybe they made sense at one time, maybe over the years, they just kept getting added to, but we went back and we said, holy cow, how do we clean this up? Again, if you are a business owner trying to figure out how much signage you have, this is a nightmare for them to figure out. So just as an example, footnote number five. So let's say you're in a commercial zoning district, great, figured that out. And it says, you can double the square footage of your sign, meaning the size of your sign. Number one, if you're on an arterial roadway. And they may say, well, what's an arterial roadway? We'd say, well, we actually have multiple definitions for arterial roadways. We have major arterials, we have minor arterials, RTC also designates arterial roadways, NDOT also designates arterial roadways. None of them are consistent. So from an implementation perspective, how do we decide who's on an arterial and who's not? It becomes very problematic, depending on who you ask. Am I on an arterial? You may get a different answer. Over time, road designations also change. So you may have an area that, you know, really hasn't been used that much, but then over time, it developed. And so it went from maybe a collector road, and now it's designated as an arterial road. So how do you keep up with that? Whose job is that? So that's issue number one with number five. The second part is, okay, so I can double my square footage if I'm on an arterial, okay? And if the speed limit is 35 miles an hour or greater, well, I can easily go and just see what the speed limit is. But you know what? Speed limits change all the time. So again, it's this constant, how are we catching up? How do we know these things? Every time we review a sign permit, do we have to drive out there and see what the speed limit is? No, 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 we can just look at Google Earth. No, 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 don't look at Google Earth, because speed limits change, and Google Earth may not have the most up-to-date speed sign. So again, these are one of the, an example of, this isn't working, why do we have this in here? It doesn't make sense from the user. It also doesn't make sense from a staff perspective. So we looked at each of these 13, and we said, what can we just put in the table as required or not? Or what just doesn't make sense and we should take out? So we took out the majority of them, or integrated them into the table itself, and we now have four footnotes. So we went from 13 to four. All right? And then in terms of entitlement, so within our signs section, we have different triggers for what has to go through either a conditional use permit, or a major site plan review, or a minor site plan review, all related to signs. And we took a step back and said, why is a conditional use permit even discussed in signs? A sign isn't a use. A use would be restaurant. A sign is more of a feature, and we need to look at the character of the sign. Again, how does it fit architecturally, right? We're looking at different things. So we said, well, what would be the right entitlement process? Major site plan review does require going to the NAB, and does require going to Planning Commission. So from that perspective, we said, well, that still makes sense. So let's look at all the, and there's three basic reasons that you would have to go through an entitlement listed there. If you're a gaming facility, a non-restricted gaming operation like a casino, and you want to go taller than 100 feet, you could do that through a major site plan review. Right now, the code says you can do that through a conditional use permit. So we're just changing the words conditional use permit to now a major site plan review. Both go to you guys, so from a process perspective, you guys still get to see it. Also, within our mixed-use downtown entertainment district, that same language applies, so anything in the downtown core, if you want to go taller than 100 feet, and this is any type of use, you would have to go through that major site plan review. So that seemed easy. The second one is, if you're a sign greater than 150 square feet and located within 150 feet of the Truckee River. The intent here is to kind of maintain that aesthetic nature of our Truckee River, so that language is already in code, we didn't want to change it. But we actually, that was a site plan review, which does not come before you guys, so we elevated that up to be a major site plan review, just for consistency. So a little bit more public review if you're near the Truckee River. And then finally on-
Oh, quick question, Angela, sorry. One, fantastic, and two, just for a point of reference, or what would be 750 feet from, I guess, is it the Truckee, or is it 150?
150 feet from the Truckee River.
What would be a good example? I'm trying to, would it be, what would be a good point of reference, like Thomas Aquinas, or is that too far out?
I mean, let me just think about, if you are in the river walk area, so there's, the Riverside Hub is over there, there's some commercial businesses.
Oh, okay.
Yep. The Renaissance.
So pretty much right adjacent.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And then that final one, this is already in code, if you're doing that animated or digital sign, if you're within 750 feet of residential zoning, right now, the code says, if you trigger that, it requires a conditional use permit. So we just changed the type of entitlement, not a conditional use permit, because we're not talking about a use, a major site plan review, because again, we're talking about a sign. So goes to NAB, goes to Planning Commission, same public review process.
A quick question on that, is it, and apologies, I haven't read the whole thing yet, but is it documented that it's digital and animated signs? Just, again, to sort of alleviate any confusion.
It's like either or.
Okay.
Yep.
But, and it's written in there?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Angela, one more question, if you don't mind. If we go back, yeah, on the last one, animated signs within 750 feet of residential zoning? Because as you know, we received a lot of public comment on some of this, and I think you said this is existing, correct?
It is.
Okay. In the downtown corridor, what would be some common residential areas?
So right now, the code says-
All the condos and all that.
Mm-hmm. It's based on residential zoning. So where you would see, where we allow animated signs within our downtown or mixed use. Anywhere in downtown, you could have animated signs, it's mixed use, it's allowed. But more specifically, we also look at the main corridors, so Virginia Street, North Virginia Street, South Virginia Street, there's a lot of residential further north and south. Fourth Street is also another main corridor where we allow animated or digital signs, a lot of residential on both sides of Fourth Street. So again, in the core area, our kind of entertainment district, we do not have residential zoning, but definitely anywhere on Virginia Street or Fourth Street, we do have residential zoning.
Okay. And how about on the west side, like the new senior apartments that just opened up off Washington, would that be within that zone, or is that-
They would not be allowed. They're not in our mixed-use entertainment core.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Okay. So the bigger topic, and I'm going to spend a lot of detail on this one, is signs for gaming. So for years, several decades, we have allowed legally established, non-restricted gaming. So that is a term, that's a real term. You have to show that you are, again, legally established, and non-restricted gaming, meaning more than, you know, 16 or more slot machines. So this is, these are the big casinos. This is Tamarack, this is Boomtown, this is anything on the row. All of those casinos, as we would typically think of them, fall under that category. A Dottie's is not a non-restricted gaming, they're considered restricted. A grocery store, where we have slot machines, they are restricted, so it doesn't apply to them. Again, truly, the big casinos that have that designation of non-restricted gaming, they get basically unlimited signage. They can do as much square footage as they want, they can go as tall as they want, up to 100 feet. After it's 100 feet, it does require an entitlement review, but they have very few rules on signs. Now, the other areas historically where we have allowed unlimited rules on signs is in that hotel-casino zoning district. We don't even have that hotel-casino zoning district anymore, but I wanted to kind of go back in history to see like where we've been over the last 20 years, and how we got to the code that's in place today. So again, this slide is specific to what our zoning code has allowed between the years 2005 and 2021. So for a 16-year window, you could have unlimited signage if you were zoned hotel-casino, doesn't matter what your use was, you just had to be zoned hotel-casino. You could also have unlimited signage if you were zoned downtown Reno, Regional Center Entertainment District. That's everything in red. You think, huh, so for 20 years, we've had unlimited signage in the downtown? It doesn't matter what your use is, you were zoned downtown Reno Regional Center Plan, unlimited signage, just so we're clear on that. So that kind of acreage between that hotel-casino zoning and that entertainment district was about 146 acres. Now, fast forward, 2021.
Just to confirm, we're talking size, shape, animated, non-animated, we're not talking-
Everything.
Off-premises, on-premises.
No, billboards, billboards are a completely different thing.
We're just talking, okay, got it, thank you.
Unless you have to be advertising the business that you're-
Yeah, so we're just talking size, shape, animated, non-animated, signage. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so again, for the years, 2005 to 2021, this is what was allowed. So let's just confirm that, because we've had a lot, again, misinformation saying, staff's wrong, staff's lying, you guys are making this up. Let's go to the facts. This is the code that was in place that talked about signs. So I highlighted HC. So again, HC zoning, any use, didn't matter if you were a gaming facility or not. You could have been Joe's Pizza, you had unlimited signage. This is what the code said, you guys all get that. Okay. Here's also what the code said, remember all those footnotes we talked about? So it said, legally established, non-restricted gaming can use the HC sign requirements. So again, if you were one of those big casinos, and you were technically a legally established, non-restricted gaming, you got to use the unlimited signage. Questions on that? Okay? Now.
Is there an example of an entity using that? I guess, privilege?
Of who?
Any entity, like, is it, just as an example?
I mean, all the casinos have used it freely. Have you, I mean, look at any casino that has a bright animated sign, right? It's not small.
Yeah.
They're all very large.
Okay. I'm just trying to wrap my mind, because you said until 2021, so I'm trying to get-
Because our code changed.
Right.
And I'm going to walk you through that in just a minute.
Sorry, my head, okay, got it.
So we're still focused on what had been in place between 2005 and 2021. So this is all in our sign table. Great, easy to get to, it's in the sign code, super easy. Now, what was not in the sign code section, but was in a very different section of our zoning code, so again, you probably have to know what you're looking for to find this. We had the entertainment district. Remember that map I showed you of the red area that was the downtown entertainment district? Our old zoning code had it as a separate zoning district. We had all these other specific zoning districts. So if you're in the California zoning district, you had different rules. If you're in the Keystone Avenue zoning district, you had different rules. And if it was rules on like how tall your buildings can be, what your building setbacks could be, how long you could stay open, right? Very different rules and regulations. The entertainment district, the one key thing that came out of that is any use in the entertainment district could use those hotel-commercial zoning sign standards. So again, this was a hidden Easter egg that the average person didn't even know was there, because it's not in our signs section. You have to fast forward probably 200 pages of the zoning code to find this, but it had been in code since 2005. So that, again, is the one piece of misinformation that nobody seems to understand. But here it is, black and white, this is what the code has always said.
Can you define, what's the, I don't know off the top of my head, what consists of the entertainment district? What's the boundaries?
Goes back to that red map you see there, and I'll fast forward to another map.
Red map?
There we go.
Oh, okay.
So this is our downtown area, it was a very big area. It extended from Keystone on one side, all the way to Wells Avenue on the other side.
Wow, okay.
I-80 was on top, and California Avenue was on bottom.
So what's on, I can't see, the, just north, so you have Wells, you have Keystone, what's the, is that a highway? Is that the river interstate?
The railroad.
Oh, that's a railroad, okay.
So the bulk of what maybe you've always thought of kind of the downtown area, stretching from Keystone to Wells, for all those years, had unlimited signage.
How far south?
The very bottom is-
But, yeah, south.
Yeah, so that kind of that very bottom street's California. So if you were on California, you had unlimited signage.
And that superseded some of the, like, you can't do this by the Truckee River?
That still applied. I mean, any sign that was within 150 feet, still had to go through at that time, it was a site plan review.
Got it.
So no changes there. But again, this was a very big boundary for years that had unlimited signage. I don't think C-NIC Nevada knew about that. Based on the letters we've gotten, they were not aware that this had been in our zoning code since 2005.
Were they used?
I mean, hit and miss. We haven't had a ton of new businesses come in, especially new development. If you have an existing building in a lot of this area, they're pretty small, so most of them aren't coming in asking for some crazy signage.
Those are probably a lot of law firms, real estate.
Yep, and all of our downtown, you know, you think about, when was the last time a new building had been built in the Virginia Street, Sierra Street corridor? It's been decades since we've had anything new built within that timeframe. So again, anyone that came in for a sign, you know, had unlimited signage. Nobody by right is going to put in a 100-foot-tall sign that nobody's going to see. If you have a tall building, you may, but again, 100 feet, you know, it's like 10 stories, like, nobody's looking up to that 10-story building and reading a sign. So for the most part, it wasn't something that I think most people even knew about, because people weren't, the type of businesses that we're seeing in our downtown aren't the new businesses, they're not giant high-rise, right? We haven't had a high-rise in downtown Reno in a long time. We haven't had a high-rise in downtown Reno in a long time. So this has been something that they have had the right to do.
And I think you mentioned this, it was kind of an Easter egg, kind of buried in page 2045 somewhere, right? And moving forward, and maybe you're going to address this, have we moved those little Easter eggs and surfaced them for discoverability?
It's a great transition. So that would all happened in our code between 2005, 2021. Then in 2021, we adopted the code that's in place today, that's our current code. Now, let's talk about what the current code says. So we got rid of hotel commercial zoning, that went away, that no longer exists. We got rid of the downtown Reno Regional Center Plan. We used to have tons of center plans and transit-oriented developer Todd corridors, all of those went away. So instead, now we have different zoning designations. So it's truly comparing apples to oranges because we have very different uses. But what happened, anywhere that we allowed gaming as a use, so if I'm a new casino and potentially I'm coming to Reno to look at where I can go, you'd figure out first, well, where does Reno allow casinos? So we have now created a gaming overlay. Again, back in 2021, this was all what was done, a gaming overlay was created. And you may say, well, what are the boundaries of a gaming overlay? Everything in red is everywhere that is in today's gaming overlay. So the big red one is gaming overlay three, that's everything around the airport, there's a lot of businesses around the airport, and then the airport itself. Just north of that is the GSR, kind of to the west of that where it says Reno, that is the same downtown entertainment district, so that's our core downtown area. You go further to the west, we've got Boomtown. Further south, we've got near the Summit Sierra Mall. So these are places where if a new casino wanted to come to town, these are the areas that they would be allowed to go, a new gaming overlay district. Now, within the gaming overlay district, I just want to highlight that that area in the middle is the downtown Reno. So downtown Reno has maintained the right to have unlimited signage because now everything that was previously allowed to have unlimited signage is what's now the gaming overlay district. So let's look at the code and see specifically what that says. Here's our table today. So each zoning district has their own signage. We have neighborhood commercial, we have professional office, then we have a category called overlays. We have many overlays, I bet we have probably 12 different zoning overlays. We have, again, Mortons and Garson Overlay District, Wells Avenue, Country Club Estates, I mean, the list goes on and on. We have a gaming overlay that's specifically called the gaming overlay district. So within our sign code, since 2021, again, all that, that area in red that we were just looking at is where we allow unlimited signage. It is not specific to say legally established, non-restricted, again, it's an overlay. So this is the challenge that we know we have, that we're trying to clean up. So here's what we're proposing. We're saying that gaming overlay probably was never intended to have unlimited signage. Sure, it's intended to have future casinos, but probably not unlimited signage for, you know, Joe's Pizza. So what we're trying to go back to is what has been allowed for 20 years? So what are the key areas that we've always allowed it? Legally established, non-restricted gaming, yep, let's give it to you, you guys have always had it, let's maintain that. And then also, in what we now call a zoning district of mixed-use downtown entertainment district. And you're thinking, well, didn't we already have an entertainment district? We did, but it was much bigger. In our new zoning code, it's much smaller. So again, the old one was about 146 acres, the new one, again, since 2021, is 136 acres. So it's smaller. Remember, the old one went all the way to Keystone, this one stops at Ralston. The old one went all the way to Wells Avenue, this one's closer to Record Street. So it is a much smaller, more condensed entertainment district, but that's where we have always, since 2005, allowed unlimited signage. So, in trying to come up with something that made sense of, well, I don't want to just take away a right that those businesses have had, at least without not a public process, let's propose something that we think is a win. Again, we're not trying to give anyone additional signage that they didn't have before. If anything, we are completely pulling it back. Gaming overlay is almost 2,000 acres, we are pulling it back to that core 136 acres.
Angela, question on that. One, thank you for this, and what criteria did you use to kind of redefine this boundary?
The entertainment district?
Yeah.
So the old center plan, again, had like a California Avenue district, it had the core entertainment district. We'd worked with a consultant back in the 2019, 2020 timeframe to create these more specific boundaries. And this one really looked at where's your truly like entertainment activity, right? Where do you have most of your nightlife? Where do you have bars? Where do you have businesses operating 24 hours a day? Separate from that, you know, you have this Riverwalk, so they have a very different kind of vibe if you're on the Riverwalk area, different from your downtown entertainment. So we now have all these separate little, I would say, mini zoning district, but the downtown core, this is truly where, at the time when this was created, where we see a vibrant entertainment activity-type district. We don't have a lot of people coming to downtown Reno expecting it to shut down at 8 o'clock at night. If you're in the core downtown area, you kind of assume you have all these casinos around you, again, a lot of nightclubs, vibrant nightlife. So that's, again, going back to the signs, this is where, since 2005, you know, the intent was always to make it a vibrant area.
Okay. So just for clarity, though, if you're living in that little corridor of orange, one of the condos, there wouldn't be neighborhood compatibility criteria for...
Very different. I mean, you think, you go back to the master plan, right? And the master plan talks about our core entertainment as really being a mixed-use area, where we want to see high-rise. We have unlimited density, we have zero parking requirements, like, that is a very different vision compared to a single-family neighborhood where we have parking requirements, we have height requirements. This is the opposite, it is we want to encourage mixed-use. We want to encourage unlimited height and unlimited density. So with that in mind, yeah, we are definitely running into challenges of, I live in downtown, I want it to be quiet after midnight. I completely, I don't live there, but I'm just saying, I completely understand and empathize with that challenge. I mean, we are really at a crossroads of what do we want to be when we grow up, and what does growing up even look like?
Right, because I'm looking on the north side there, where it ends on Sixth Street, I want to say, right before Seventh.
Uh-huh.
But that seems to be, this was made in 2019, but since then...
21.
But you said the consultant did it in 2019?
We adopted this in 2021.
Okay.
So we started working with the public, we spent about two years working with the public, and it was adopted in 2021.
Okay. So since then, though, UNR has kind of come in closer, working with the city to become more of a university town, all that?
Yep.
And they seem okay as a stakeholder with unlimited signage, if you will, next to their...
UNR has not approached us with any concerns
Okay.
or agreements of signage.
Okay.
Yeah. So let's talk about, though, you know, again, this is just a draft, this is not, the red lines that we're looking at is just a draft. So this is staff's, I would say, first shot at saying, okay, based on the feedback we heard from the stakeholders, and we said, what do you like and not like about our zoning code? We took that, and we also said, staff, what do you have trouble actually like administering or implementing? Let's fix that. Legal, what issues do we need to incorporate? We fixed that. And beyond that, we didn't touch anything major. Our goal was not to say, we're going to make major policy changes without direction from anyone. Our goal was to say, here's the basics. As a community, what are we doing wrong? What should we do differently? So where we're at in the process, we held a series of stakeholder meetings in September with this red line. We're now at Planning Commission, again, this is not a draft ordinance for you to approve or deny, this is strictly just to get feedback. We're going to take your feedback and go to City Council. They're not approving or denying anything at that point, they're just giving staff feedback. And so, I mean, ultimately, they set the policy direction with your input, so if there's big things that we should be doing differently on signs, now is the time to discuss it and then take it to council. Ultimately, we'll go back and redraft based on all the different conversations we've had and feedback we've had. Most of the feedback that was included in our package was from, I think, representatives from scenic Nevada, but know that there are a number of other conversations where people have called us and had conversations, everything from the school district, right, wondering how this impacts their schools, RTC, who deals with roads, and you think, why would RTC care about signs? But every time they widen a road and they have to take down business signs, it affects businesses. So a lot of those non-conforming businesses, if a sign gets taken down, they're saying, whoa, 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 they widened my road and required me to take down my sign, why am I now required to have a smaller sign? So we're having a lot of those side discussions, so I do think there's going to be a lot of changes between this version and the final version. But again, just try to be consistent in the messaging to make sure we're all speaking from the same information. And again, hopefully now you kind of have an educated background as to where we've been, and maybe the question now is where do you guys think we should be going? Okay. I will stop talking and bring it back to just questions or discussion, and we'll be taking notes and, like I said, reporting back to City Council with any of your feedback.
Awesome, thanks so much, Angela. I think I'm going to move actually into public comment, and then we'll come back to the commission, I'm sure there's some questions and comments, but I do have one request to speak for, Mr. Greg Ferraro, whenever you're ready.
My name is Greg Ferraro, I'm here on behalf of the Nevada Resort Association, which is the association representing the state's largest industry. We will go on the record complimenting Angela for the presentation today, but we're going to take a position of opposition until we can see that final language in January. We appreciate the effort that staff has put into this and many others, but from our standpoint, we would rather see the status quo until that language is made public, we have a chance to review it, and then at that point, we'll take a new position or maintain this position. But for the record, and for your discussion purposes, I want you to know that we're in opposition until we see the final language. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in chambers wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, do we have anyone on Zoom wishing to speak?
We do have a few participants on Zoom, yes.
Great, let's switch to Zoom.
Lori, it looks like you're up first, please unmute and state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Lori Ray. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. And I'm here on behalf of Scenic Nevada, a nonprofit, all-volunteer organization dedicated to protecting and enhancing scenic beauty and community character principally through sign control. We authored the 2,000-ballot initiative approved by 57% of Reno voters to ban new billboards within the city limits, and we've been working on sign issues ever since. Today, we're here to oppose staff's proposal to expand signage in the downtown mixed-use entertainment district. I wrote you a letter explaining our position, and I hope you had a chance to read it. Along with our letter, you've gotten more than 85 others from Reno residents opposing the draft before you today. People think that downtown looks bad enough already and don't want it ruined even further with unlimited signage throughout the district. As you know, city staff has prepared changes to the sign code to allow any business from pawn shops to liquor stores in the district to have 100-foot-tall signs with no limit on number, size, or types of lighting, and that includes digital signs with no public input and no public hearings. Scenic Nevada's request is for you to reject the draft before you and replace it with the first draft submitted to you last April, and that's when Ms. Foose told you the city inadvertently left out a clarification that only casinos were entitled to the largest signs. And now she's asking you to add all businesses in the entertainment district, saying that's the way it's been for 20 years, and we just don't agree with that. Since 2021, the current sign code chart says signs in the mixed-use districts, like the downtown entertainment district, are limited to eight feet tall on parcels under an acre, and from 25 to 35 feet on over an acre. And the size, sign, the sign size is limited to a maximum 250 square feet, and digital signs are only allowed under limited circumstances. On today's chart, only casinos in the mixed-use districts get the largest signs. As far as the gaming overlay, as Ms. Foose told you last April, the intention was to limit large signs to casinos, so every business in the downtown district has not had unlimited signage for the past 20 years. Scenic Nevada and Reno citizens don't want the downtown ruined any further by sign clutter and large digital signs. They create a tacky vibe that will repel instead of attract people to downtown, they use far too much energy, they need to clutter and blight, possibly reducing property values. This proposal will ruin our sense of place and hurts community pride while reducing the ability to have a livable, walkable downtown. There's no reason to allow this proposal to move forward, please ask planning staff to replace it with the first draft presented to you last April that merely clarifies the original intention to limit the largest signs to casinos. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. You said we had a few folks on Zoom, correct?
We do. Tyler, you registered to speak? If you'd like to speak, please unmute yourself and state your name for the record, you'll Tyler, you'll have to unmute yourself if you'd like to make comment. Okay, I think we'll take a beat. We do have two voicemails that we can play while we wait for Tyler.
Yeah, sounds good, please do.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Bohall, B-O-H-A-L-L. I'm calling regarding item number 5.1, about expanding the signage downtown to include digital signs and all that, and I'm completely against it. I feel like our city is not very attractive, and that would only make it worse. I hope that matters. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hello, my name is Sloan, S-L-O-A-N, McDonald, M-C-D-O-N-A-L-G, and I'm calling in regard to the issue coming up tomorrow evening in regard to unlimited signage for any business in downtown Reno. And I want to acknowledge the fact that I am totally opposed to unlimited signage of any kind for all businesses, I'm not even crazy about it with the casinos. I realize that businesses and casinos need to advertise. However, if I wanted to live in Las Vegas, I'd live in Las Vegas. We have a very special city in Reno, and it needs to stay that way with conservative signage that has proportion limitations as well as glitz. That's all that I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right, that's it for the voicemails, we'll check back in on Zoom. Tyler, would you like to make comment?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Tyler Colton. I wasn't really, I'm not sure how I got on the comment list, but while we're on here, I was thinking, hi Angela, great job. I guess I am interested in when another business comes into a property, one of these older ones that have these beautiful kind of neon signs that currently do exist, and it changes a use, will they still be able to use those cool vintage signs, or those come down once the property's been changed as a different use? What happens to some of those great signs that we still have? Are they grandfathered in? How does that affect this within this title change? And that's all I have to say, thanks.
All right, that's all the hands raised we have in Zoom. We did receive additional correspondence that was forwarded to the Planning Commission and entered into the record.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions or comments of Angela.
Sure. Happy to keep it off. Thank you, Chair. And thank you so much, Angela, and Lauren, and your staff. I know a lot of this, you've been here for a while, but a lot of this also predates you as you've mentioned in your timeline, so it's no easy feat, so just thanks for trying to find solutions to move us forward. I think we heard from Ms. Ray, Lori Ray, mention that maybe some of what you presented perhaps was contradictory to what's in place. Would you mind just kind of clarifying for the record, as you did before, like, what's true and maybe what's misunderstood?
So I think, let's go back to...
Sorry, Angela, can you turn your mic on?
About now?
Oh.
Now you're on. Green, green. When we initially started the process, council gave us two directives. Do a separate sign text amendment, look at the whole sign code, do a deep dive, fix it. They also said, do some cleanups on the zoning code. So we initially thought, oh, the zoning code cleanup's going to go really fast, let's just get all the things that we know we need quickly. We know we're going to do a deep dive on signs later, so the things that we felt we needed right away, we're like, oh, we have five zoning districts that we don't have regulations on signs, that seems like something maybe we should quickly put in. The other concern was, again, when you have this gaming overlay, it doesn't specifically talk about all the things that are addressed. So I will tell you, within the gaming overlay, most of our existing casinos are there. We have two casinos that are not in the gaming overlay, so that in itself is an issue. What if those two casinos that are not in the gaming overlay, what if they wanted to come in and increase their signage? So let's just clean up and clarify, so any non-restricted, legally established gaming operation gets that unlimited signage. So that was the quick, easy answer, I say, that we were trying to say. Again, we always knew we were going to do a deep dive on the sign code. I think what Ms. Ray doesn't want us to say is that we were always going to do a deep dive. And with that, let's open it up and understand what makes sense and what doesn't. We have all these different overlay districts. What she doesn't understand is we have a separate overlay district called gaming. It's not specific to just non-restricted gaming establishments, it's a gaming overlay, it's over 2,000 acres. So the way the code is written now is, any business in a gaming overlay has unlimited signage. We don't like that either, that was never the intent, let's clean that up. So I've tried... So the way the code is written now is any business in a gaming overlay has unlimited signage. We don't like that either. That was never the intent. Let's clean that up. So I've, I've tried to explain that. Um, it's probably my sixth time I've, I've had this conversation with Ray on, Ms. Ray on this topic. I don't think we are ever going to get to a place where we can agree to disagree. What we can agree on is that let's fix that. The gaming overlay should not be unlimited signage for every user. We all agree on that. Code is proposing to change that. Staff's proposing to change that. And again, unless I get some, some big policy changes from council, I was going back to, well, where do we have unlimited signage? Like for 20 years, where have we had unlimited signage for every business? So happy to change that. If I get direction from council to do that, I will do that. But I'm not throwing out some wild and crazy ideas without council direction.
Great, thank you. And I do have some just follow-ups, but I'll, I'll share the time and space here with my fellow commissioners.
Sounds good. I'll make sure we get back to Commissioner, Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Thank you for that deep dive. Honestly, this has to be a lot of work with all the things you guys have going on. Okay, so a couple of questions. The, I understand the gaming overlay, and I understand that you highlighted in red from Keystone to Wells to railroad to California. That is currently within the gaming overlay district. Is that accurate? Well, it was at one point. I'm sorry.
The, the, let me go, but this one, this is the one that you're thinking of that used to be the entertainment district?
The old one, yes. Or the, yes, the entertainment district used to be the entertainment. Now with the changes in 2021, it is now the gaming overlay district. The size has shrunk. Now it's, um, the size is no longer as large, 136.
Went from 146 acres of downtown to 136. Not specific to downtown.
Got it. So I understand that. That's correct. Okay. My question is, and you mentioned policy change, you have no, you can't make that decision. You're working within the confines of your role and what you can do within the code.
And yeah, I mean, absolutely. Staff can come up with whatever ideas we think make sense. But again, my role, my goal for this sign code cleanup was not to make major changes. It was to address the things that we have issues with. And so, um, the main things we have issues with are, is that sign table. It is ridiculously impossible to understand. Most of those issues we cleaned up in a way that I think restricts signage in some areas and adds a little bit more square footage in some areas, but it's nothing major. The average person wouldn't even know the difference. But now any business can go to that table and be like, oh, I get it. I get X number of square feet. There's not 13 footnotes that if this applies, if this speed limit, if this arterial, right? We took all of that out to make it easier. And again, direction from planning commission. If, if you guys, because again, you guys are a recommending body to the city council. If you feel that we should be making some major changes to our sign code, let's talk about it. I think this is the opportunity to say, what do you think we should be doing in our sign code?
So that brings me to my two questions, and thank you for sharing that. That brings me to my two questions. Is there, because the concern seems to be you're, you're working within your confines, and then the others are concerned with regard to who's going to be able to access the signage, the breadth of signage that the code allows for. Can we just remove this red area, the 136 acres from the overlay district? I mean, obviously that would be a whole change in polit, not policy, but I think it'd be a change in the development code and a change in ordinance and the master plan potentially.
Yep.
That'd be larger than what you can do within your conf, the confines you're working with. But potentially is that, should this be an issue and should council have concerns? Is that available, an option available to council?
So you're saying this orange area here, should we take it out of the gaming overlay boundary?
Is that even possible?
This is where most of our casinos are, so I don't know that that makes sense.
So there you go. That's, that's not an option. Number two, thank you for answering that. Number two, um, the other, shoot, no, I, uh, dang it, I had a train of thought. Numbered, shoot, you gotta come back to me. Sorry, I had, I was on track. Thank you.
Yeah, well, um, we'll check in with our commissioners on Zoom. Commissioner Dracula, do you have any questions?
No, no questions. Thanks for checking in though.
Uh, Commissioner Romar, any questions at this time?
Yeah, I do. I, I.
Go for it.
I wanted to follow up. I, I really appreciate the complexity that staff is, you know, dealing with here. Signs are perhaps the hardest part of the entire code to create ordinance because you have to envision every possible artistic, contextual, technological aspect of signs. And it's really hard to do. And as I, I'm taking this call, second time I've listened to this workshop, I'm looking at the Las Vegas Strip. You know, it's, and, and one thing I'll say is I think this is the time to open the policy and really dig. You've already, you've already opened the door. There's 85 public comments. Staff might as well just go ahead and use this as an opportunity to evaluate the sign code. There's sort of no going back now. And I find it so interesting, just from sort of an eye philosophical standpoint, like here in Nevada, where we've made neon the element of our state, where we have a collection of old signs that we're putting in a neon museum that live with hopes of one day having a museum in our own city. Signs have been such an important part of our history. And yet the historian who, you know, always hearkens back to, well, this is what Reno's always been, is strongly opposed to having signage in the future. Now, I understand that signs today are not like signs of the past where they were artisan-created, you know, hand-done creations. Now they are screens. And I think there needs to be a conversation about, well, what does the screen entail? And how big is the screen, you know, that is really what we're talking about is how big are these screens downtown? And we have screens everywhere. This commission's heard them about gas stations, at the pump. We have screens on every, you know, corner. There are some like the GSR right on our freeway that are just incredibly large. So it's not so much about controlling a static creation as much as it's this animated screen, you know, function that's now part of our cityscape. But we are trying to create this dynamic downtown. And it's just such a, it's such a, I, I don't know if there's a, like a way to poll us or something. Like what are our preferences and what are the limits of our preferences on what that can look like? Because it can be really well done. Anybody who's seen the sphere might argue that that is a huge attraction and money-making advantage to the Vegas skyline now. And that is used as a sign. So we can't, I think, put too many limitations on what this could be for enhancing our city, at least in the downtown. And so I guess, you know, that was a long-winded way of saying, I really encourage staff to use this since it's open and in a public forum and will continue to be so, is to really think about, you know, what the future will look like and, and think about how important signs have been to our past. Uh, and not just to say, oh, all signs are bad. Because I think that's kind of the public feedback we've been hearing. So, any other commissioners? That was long-winded.
Sorry, Commissioner DelVR, please.
Thank you. And thank you, Angela, for a lot of this explanation. As you know, we've been getting tons of email and feedback, and there's a lot of misinformation out there. And I think that there's some naivete as well. It's like, this is the downtown area. This is the casino. This is what pays our revenue. Like this, you know, you, we don't want to get rid of it. To Commissioner Romar's point, this might be a good opportunity, like, you know, uh, Ms. Ray was talking about the energy it uses. So maybe signage has to be solar. I don't know. You know, whatever it is, it might be a good opportunity to start thinking about that. Or to, you know, have, um, uh, some like best cases in place to help people with the design. Or like rotation or carousel of digital, whatever that looks like. So, but again, I, you know, it's, I think it's great to clean up the code and make it consistent so that everybody knows what, what they're getting. One of my concerns actually is, again, I, I recognize that this is not an expansion. This is, you're shrinking the area and like just point blank, if I was a pawn shop, I might be like, okay, I've got six months to go get a huge sign up now. And so we need to be careful and mindful of what the potential could be in this interim period before we put some of this actually into, into place. Again, I don't have a pawn shop. I'm not looking for a huge sign. But again, it's just something to consider and how that might impact the staff too, if all of a sudden, suddenly, you know, there are a lot of applications for signs. But, but again, I think having the consistency is, is really critical. Again, not, not just for, for staff, but for people who are trying to understand what it is that they can and can't do right now. So, so I appreciate the effort you guys put into this. I know it's ongoing and it will be continued. And, and again, I think it does open up the door for, uh, further discussions, not just about signage, but again, you know, what, what do we want this downtown area to be, to look like? It's a little rough right now, so. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think to that point, it's, it's funny, you know, we, we have a program at Reno where we do, we, we give you money to upgrade your facade. We can't even give free money away to businesses in downtown to upgrade their facade. The, the chance of them coming in with hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of new signage, probably not going to happen. Could happen, but we can't even, like I said, it's, we, we struggle with downtown and have for years. I don't know that signs is the problem with downtown. There's so many other issues with downtown. But question is, you know, what, going forward, do you think that this is an entertainment district that should have unlimited signage? Or do you think we should rein it back and do less?
Commissioner Rubisera, we'll go back to you.
Sure. Thank you, Chair and Angela for teaming me up there. I think Commissioner Villanueva, Romar, and others are onto something and, you know, with your presentation as well. I think what, what kind of is sitting with me right now is that earlier in your presentation, we, we talked about like the, um, the earlier applicant, not Need for Speed or something along those lines, right? But, um, we were placing limitations on the, the size of the sign based on the front-facing size. And would it make sense to do something similar in this entertainment district where, yeah, maybe if you're like one of the larger hotel casinos, uh, you know, the, the ones we all know, maybe they have a little bit more, leniency or liberty, you know, to go larger and bigger. But if you are, you know, a smaller shop within that entertainment district, maybe you do have some, uh, additional standards to me and design standards. Maybe they tie into ADA and other, uh, factors that we should consider.
And just to clarify too, so outside of this orange boundary, we have other mixed-use zoning districts. For your kind of reference, all of our sign standards for the rest of the downtown area, whether it's east, west, north, south, anything zone mixed-use, we have the same similar sign standard as our commercial areas. So based on your building frontage, however wide it is, you get one square foot of signage. So that's, that's the bulk of downtown outside of this core area. If you are on a parcel that has, so that'd be for your wall sign. If you're on a parcel that has land for a, a sign in the, in the yard, um, you know, we've got that shopping center off of Keystone. So they get additional signage for freestanding signs. Right now, they would be allowed to go up to eight feet in height. You can go taller depending on some unique circumstances. And again, square footage of your sign is about 125 square feet. So again, if that's something that makes sense, we do have other sections of the code that we could kind of copy and paste for the downtown area. It still gives them the same flexibility that their surrounding mixed-use zoning partners have. But it's based on frontage. You look at some of these parcels where these businesses are, it is tiny. A lot of these businesses, and it's all existing, right, already built, especially Virginia Street. Unless you're a casino, a lot of these businesses are very, very tight, don't have a whole lot of, of frontage. So there's not even enough room on, on the building to put a giant sign. I think that's probably another reason why we're not seeing this proliferation of crazy signs is most of those businesses are really narrow.
Commissioner Villanueva?
Thank you, Chair. I remember my question, my second question. So my second question is, it's interesting that we have the Resort Association and Scenic Nevada, they lie, they're aligned for different reasons probably. But I guess, what are you hearing from stakeholders? Because when, when I look at this, I'm like, okay, well, you're reducing the size from what was otherwise greater impact. So what is the pushback from, I mean, obviously we heard the public comment, but when you have the Resort Association, Scenic Nevada aligned, I'm wondering, what's the feedback? What are we getting from the stakeholders that, that's, I mean, it seems like this would be the compromise. So I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding.
Yeah, I think what the Resort Association would like to see is within our sign table, they want us to call out a specific category for legally established, non-restricted gaming with unlimited signage. Because right now, what's proposed in our table is a footnote in our sign table. And that I think they feel might just be hidden. They don't want it to be a footnote that says, if you're a casino, you could have unlimited signage. They want it to be moved to the actual sign table so that it's black and white for everyone to see. There's no, you know, confusion. It's not a footnote. It's in the table that says they have unlimited signage.
What's on the table now? It's just the overlay, right? It's the actual, so there, I mean, is, is non-restricted gaming a, you, like, I mean, it's a use. I mean, I know that, but the sign is not, the, the table isn't based on usage, it's just based on overlay districts, is that?
Yeah. And I think if, if we go back to the, the old code, so that area in yellow was what I'm talking about with the being a footnote.
Yeah.
So I think, um, what, what we're proposing is to take that same similar language. Legally established, non-restricted gaming is allowed by right in any zoning district. We're proposing to put it back into our sign table as a footnote. It's not there now. It got removed when the code was cleaned up in 2021. So we're saying, oops, that shouldn't have happened. We should have kept that footnote in there. So our staff's proposal is to put that footnote back. So if you are a casino, doesn't matter what your zoning district is, doesn't matter if you're in a gaming overlay or not, you are entitled to that unlimited signage.
Okay, so it's a footnote now. They want it to be in, but it doesn't really match. It, it wouldn't really make sense in the table because it's, it's out of place. It's, it's used, whereas the others are overlay. Okay, so that's from that stakeholder. Some of the others, I mean, Scenic Nevada, what, their pushback is, I mean, they're just not understanding, it seems like, with regard to the, what was in place before and then the restriction or the confinement, I guess.
Yeah, I think they're definitely not understanding that. But I think to their point, regardless, they don't feel that that downtown entertainment district should have unlimited signage. I think at the end of the day, that's the point they're trying to make, is they don't want the downtown to have unlimited signage. They want it to match with, again, whatever the other mixed-use zoning districts have.
Okay, the other mixed, okay. So, so I guess on, on the one hand, we don't have agreement with what it used to be. So they're just, I mean, that's kind of a, seems like a willful, if you're, what you're saying is the truth, in fact, was the case.
Tried to outline it as black and white. Here's what the code says, but I think they just don't believe me or I don't know.
Okay.
Legally, do you want to weigh in on this? Am I missing anything?
So, okay, I'm just trying to, so I guess, and then we can't obviously remove the overlay for obvious reasons, as you indicated earlier, because it include, incorporates most of the gaming corridor.
Yep, yep. But again, kind of what we're saying is let's not tie the overlay to signage. The overlay shouldn't be connected to signage. The gaming overlay, overlay should just be back to, this is where you can have gaming. Let's leave that as an issue. What we're saying is where we should have unlimited signage, legally established, non-restricted gaming facilities and that mixed-use entertainment zoning district.
Where it already.
Where it already is and has been.
Why keep it then? Why not just define non-restricted gaming? Well, can you, maybe that's a legal thing. You can't like pick and choose. I, I don't know.
And we could, and we can do whatever we want to do. Our initial proposal was just to put it in as a footnote, right? In any zoning district, if you're a casino, you would get unlimited signage. And we'll work with legal, again, depending on what the direction is from you and council. I, I don't necessarily have a problem with putting a use in our sign table because it's such a, a unique one-off. But I want to make sure legal would be comfortable that we're not going to get in trouble.
I mean, I think the footnote's fine. It seems clear as day to me. And it would make, would be more confusing because, I mean, if you have, if it's in the, I mean, if it's clear, it's there, you could, they could do. My question is, why not just limit it to that? If we're, if we're in the overlay district, why not just limit it to non-restricted gaming? Why do we need to, I mean, there's no issue with grandfathering in here because, I mean, I guess if your business that already has the sign, you're grandfathered in. But why do we need to maintain it moving forward? Why can't we just?
And that's a policy decision. It's a, a right those businesses have had for 20 years. We have not heard from the businesses. We as staff have not done any outreach to those downtown businesses. They may have a very different opinion on their signage. So I think that would be something that we would need to do. So I think that would be something that we would need to do, if that's the direction that you guys are recommending, if that's the direction that council wants to go. We'll do a series of stakeholder meetings to make sure, hey, business community, in that entertainment district, here's what's being discussed, it impacts you, what are your thoughts on this?
I guess, yeah, absolutely, they do that. But that would seem to be the compromise between Scenic Nevada and the Resort Association. I mean, they get what they want, maybe not a footnote, but I mean, my opinion, it counts. Like, you get what you want, so.
Two stakeholders would be okay with that. It's all of the downtown businesses that I guarantee you will blow you up next time we come before you.
Got it.
I don't mean that, you're going to get a lot of feedback.
I have a, and again, it seems that, well, and again, we get a lot from Scenic Nevada, and I'm all for a beautification of a successful, vibrant downtown. Is there a way, and it wouldn't necessarily be part of the code, but again, some, like, some sort of best practices or something that we can help to make the signs, I mean, I get that, you know, we can't dictate what they put on it and stuff like that, but maybe just working with some of these organizations or artists in the area or whatever, and I know that, you know, we have other programs that businesses just don't take advantage of anyway. But, you know, to work with the Scenic Nevadas and whoever else pops up as well, to ensure that, again, what is now a narrower focus, but we can still make it amenable to the downtown area, right? Does that make sense?
I do, and I think, I mean, there is no best practices for signs. We looked at many, many different zoning codes to say, oh, are we even close? What is everyone doing? Nobody is the same. Everybody is different. And when we asked the sign companies that work with all the different agencies, Reno Sparks, Washoe County, Carson Friendly, we said, hey, where does ours fit in, you know, whether you like it or not? Where, what do we need to make changes to? Do you like Sparks? They're like, oh my God, no, 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 don't do what Sparks does. Everybody has an opinion on signs. That's the end result. But what I think, I mean, I think what I feel would be helpful is to do kind of a sampling of our downtown businesses and the signage that they have, right? I feel like if they are feeling threatened that we're taking something away, maybe they are already fine. Maybe the sign square footage and height that they have today is less than what would be allowed if we were just to go standard mixed-use zoning. And we haven't done that analysis, I don't, you know, I don't think it would hurt anything, it would probably be helpful, just as information for you and for council to see, how does this impact downtown businesses today? Most of our, again, the struggle, you take Virginia Street, most of those businesses haven't put up a new sign in probably decades.
Commissioner Rubisera?
Sure, I think that's a great idea. I mean, we don't know what we don't know until we reach out. And good to do that outreach with those downtown stakeholders. I just wanted to clarify or get clarification, Angela. For this, we're focused on the entertainment district, which is downtown, or the gaming overlay as well, like, because you showed the map, and I think it showed the airport being part of, part of it, a little bit of South Reno, that one, right? So are we strictly focused on downtown as the entertainment district, or are the other red areas entertainment district?
This is everything in the gaming overlay. And what we're saying is, let's take all the sign requirements out of the gaming overlay.
Yep.
It's an overlay, you also have your own zoning district. So whatever your zoning is within those red areas is what signage would be allowed. So we're saying, take gaming overlay out of our sign table.
Perfect.
And what we're saying is, well, what about all those businesses that have had this ability?
Got it.
Unlimited signs, what do we do about them?
Right. Do we grandfather them in, or do we take another path of compromise or something?
Do we continue it? Or do we cut it? Do we do something in the middle?
And that latter group is specifically focused or located within the downtown corridor?
Yeah, the only place in town that has had that unlimited gaming is the map that we started with in the beginning.
Or is like Boomtown included in this as well?
They were hotel casino, and again, we would grandfather, I mean, we could. At this point, we're not proposing to grandfather them in. But the key area, again, that HC area, Boomtown, that is not a vibrant entertainment district, right? It's Cabela's and a casino, so, and now there's an industrial building there.
Rest in peace Bob Kishel.
It's very different compared to our core entertainment district. And that's what our concern was with, you know, again, our entertainment district is unique, it is special, and it's something that only Reno has. It's not Vegas, right? It's not Roseville, it is truly Reno. But what do we want it to look like?
I think, you know, we're obviously a body that, like you said, recommends to y'all and council, and hopefully weighs in the input of the public sentiment. But I do also like your idea of pulling the actual stakeholders there. They should be at the table as much as anyone else, so we can continue that conversation and find, you know, some compromise. Kind of my thoughts there.
Thanks Commissioner. I'll go ahead and just, I guess, take an opportunity to throw my two cents in. First, just appreciate the level of work and detail that has gone into this. I can't actually imagine the amount of hours it took to become proficient in the prior sign code, and then have kind of the ability to reimagine and, you know, reconstitute the sign code to some extent. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. It's a lot more complex, I think, than people give it credit for.
It's a lot like reading a vacuum cleaner manual, super technical, not so interesting.
Yeah, yeah, I think we were saying the same thing, just in different ways, but.
Put pictures in, I thought you'd like that.
But anyway, so I just kind of want to underscore that, you know, a lot of effort on a very dense topic. And, you know, I think it's probably a good idea to get feedback from the downtown stakeholders. I can't imagine they would deviate much kind of from what you're proposing, unless I'm missing, I mean, just where I said, I think this entertainment district that we've sort of, kind of articulated, that you've articulated, it makes sense. It's consistent with every urban downtown corridor I've been to in any city anywhere in my life. I mean, it's just, you know, this is where you would have the most signs, whether they're neon, or they're screens, or whatever they happen to be, like, this is a downtown, and this is the appropriate venue for these things. And I imagine the folks that do business downtown, whether they've been grandfathered in for a long time, or they're coming into downtown, would probably appreciate the flexibility to, you know, to benefit from what's been proposed. So, yeah, to me, I think it's really pretty straightforward. So, anyway, that's where I sit on it, and thanks again for your time. Any other questions or comments on the body? Commissioner Villanueva?
Mine's a clarification question, sorry. I'm still looking at that categories, I think earlier I misspoke, I said that it was categorized by overlay, but you're saying you're replacing that, and you're categorizing by use on.
So this, that's the old one, let's go to what today's, today's code is this, right? Here's our sign table.
Got it, okay.
And as a kind of a high level, an overlay is an area within the overlay, we have a bunch of different types of overlays. One in particular is called the gaming overlay. So anything in the gaming overlay gets that unlimited signage.
So it's categorized by district, and within district, it's categorized by, oh, I guess district under district is.
Move to these, yeah, so all of these districts are different zoning categories. The areas in blue, like the one says non-residential, that's what we call our industrial, industrial, commercial, mixed employment, those are all called non-residential. Below that, we have this special category, which is public facility. That's also where we added the park screenways and open space in the red lines. So overlays, most of our overlays don't have separate sign requirements. The gaming overlay specifically calls out separate sign requirements. So we're proposing to delete that. Let's not have separate sign requirements for the gaming overlay. We're saying, let's pull it back. The gaming overlay should not have unlimited signage. Whatever your zoning type is, is what you should have signage for.
So for example, gaming, non-restricted, what zoning is that? That would be?
Every casino is on a different.
Oh, got it, okay.
Piece of land. Mm-hmm. But, you know, so it goes back to then, the downtown entertainment zoning district is a zoning district. So we can put it in as a zoning district, and say you have unlimited signage within the mixed-use downtown entertainment district. And that's what's proposed.
And then the footnote, of course.
Yep, and then a footnote that says legally established, non-restricted gaming, regardless of your zoning, you get unlimited signage.
Okay, so like, the Nugget and GSR would be, would still be okay and get unlimited signage?
Tamara, GSR, Boomtown, Border Town, they're all legally established casinos, they get unlimited signage.
Regardless of if they're in that overlay or not. So I guess my recommend, if we are asking for recommendations, my recommendation is keep the footnote, it's clear to me, I don't think that, it doesn't seem ambiguous at all to me, whether or not they get the signage. So I just don't see that being a problem. And then I would, I would say, if you're in that formerly entertainment district, I guess, whatever it's called now, if you're in that, and you've had a sign that was beyond what you're otherwise entitled to because of the privileges you were given prior, you can continue to receive those privileges. Anything moving forward, however, no. You're subject to the limitations, just like all the others are subject to the limitations. That would be, of course, get stakeholder input, but based on what you've explained earlier, no one's really, doesn't seem like there's a lot of, a lot happening downtown. So not to disparage that space, but, you know, I think there's a lot that could happen, not happening yet. But given that, I would recommend that that be the case. Get the stakeholder input, if we get a lot of opposition, and there's good reason and valid reason for it, then obviously, then I'll shut up. But that's kind of my position.
Okay.
You know, I think, even if you did keep it unlimited, based on like some of the feedback we've gotten, it's probably not going to get people lined up out the door to do more signs. But this, to me, it kind of goes back, I think, to Commissioner Rohrmeier's point, it's, you know, what do we actually want to maybe happen in the future? And my opinion is that keeping it unlimited creates more opportunity in the future. It makes the current stakeholders happy, it makes gaming happy, but it gives people an opportunity to come and try and do some of the things that, you know, other commissioners have talked about in terms of beautification, or even just having more maybe practical downtown, where you have, you know, maybe like financial district, or more food and drinks, or professional offices, whatever the case may be. I think, you know, this is sort of part and parcel into giving people flexibility to do more stuff downtown. So, yeah, again, I mean, to me, it's pretty straightforward, I think, the way it's proposed and written is the way that makes the most sense. So, thank you again.
Okay.
Yeah, one last thought there. Thanks again Angela and Lauren behind you. Yeah, so I guess for after tonight, I personally, I'm not in a position where I would say I'd recommend unlimited usage tonight. I definitely would love to see that outreach to those stakeholders in that corridor, and probably be mindful of how that poll is approached, because if you ask somebody, do you want us to take that away? Of course, everyone's going to say no, right? But perhaps what might come from this polling or outreach is that maybe the big players, like the Row and J Resort and folks, they probably know that they have unlimited usage, but a lot of the other folks don't even know, right? And that might come to light. And that might actually, you know, elevate a supply and demand constraint that we might not be able to handle or the city, right, with all these folks coming to your department now saying, whoa, we didn't know we could do this, now we're going to start asking for this, right? So it might bring some good insights for y'all to consider, for us to consider. And then when you do that, bring it back to this body, and we can evaluate everything as a whole, and then make that recommendation to city council.
It's a lot like saying, you can have unlimited density, no parking, any use you want. Come on down. Nobody's come. Nobody's coming to Reno. Sky's the limit, whatever you want.
We'll even give you money for your storefront.
Hey, we'll pay you to come down here.
Come to Reno and build something in downtown. No, I'm good, I'm good.
I would not be particularly worried about unintended consequences with this item.
I'm 99% sure nobody's going to come knocking on the door to put in a giant sign.
Any further questions or comments? Maybe, did I hear something from Zoom? Sorry, Commissioner Rohrmeier?
I really appreciated something Angela said, when you said, the question is posed, is this an entertainment district or not? And I think that that's a valuable question to put out to the larger, not just stakeholders. I feel like all residents of Reno are really invested in what downtown looks like. Yes, the stakeholders and property owners that run businesses in the entertainment core, of course, have a large voice, but all of us feel, I think, quite passionate about our downtown, which is why there was so much public comment about this issue. And I think that's a really simple question to put out. I mean, I know that I've participated, even when they were painting the arch, that question was put out by the city as what the preferences are. So maybe that's something that can be included in the next phase of engagement. But we, I really appreciated our Chair Armstrong's comments. It's about what's the potential here. And I think this can't be terribly separated from the noise issue. It's like, do we want this thriving entertainment core, or do we want people to live and have a very different vision for our downtown? So, you know, those tensions are being felt in many ways, and so I appreciate your continued efforts. But let's, yeah, why not go all in on this and try to get bigger answers? But I appreciate the clarifications and the code cleanup so far.
Thanks Commissioner. While in Zoom, Commissioner Draculich, anything to add?
No, nothing to add, and I appreciate everybody's questions and comments, and Angela fielding those, and like everybody else said, a lot of work goes into this, and I'm glad we're having a public conversation, so thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Any further questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Rubisera?
Sure, I guess one for Angela, obviously, but what were you hoping to get from this body tonight, and do you feel like it was fulfilled?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is, this is a tough topic. This is the first time you guys have had to really think through all the nuances, and you learned a lot, hopefully. So I think the feedback was good. I think at the end of the day, we as staff are going to go back and see, if we were to change the entertainment district, the sign standards, who would it impact? I mean, I think it's much easier to have a conversation with the downtown businesses if we tell them, we're going to change your sign code, but it doesn't negatively impact you, because you, your sign today could be bigger, based on, you know, the sign that we're proposing, the signage that we could propose, not that unlimited signage. So I think we will go back and do a deeper dive, and then reach out to the downtown businesses and have that conversation. Whoever said it, like, if you say we're going to take away your signage, of course, they're going to freak out. But I think if we say, here's what you have today, here's likely what you would go to, are you guys comfortable with that? You could actually build more than you have today. And in most cases, again, most of those downtown businesses are so small, those buildings are very, very small. So it's tough to put a whole lot of wall sign on any of those buildings. So I think we'll do that, and we do need to go to council and get some feedback from them. I think it will be helpful for them to have that information, as they're kind of making some, giving us direction on next steps. And then we'll go back and we'll make changes based on all the feedback we've gotten over the, you know, September to January timeframe, and then we'll come back to planning commission with a draft red line.
Sounds great to me. Thanks so much, appreciate your time as always. And with that, we will close item five, and move to item six, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. I can take it for this meeting. No updates since the last meeting. We have actually canceled at TMRPA the October meeting, because there will actually be three regional planning commission meetings in November, to, I think, approve the natural resource plan and public infrastructure plan primarily. So exciting stuff going on over there, but kind enough to give us the month of October off. So with that, we will close item six and move to item seven, staff announcements.
Thank you, just a few tonight. As you might recall, at the last meeting, I mentioned that Cavalry Church Zone Change was moving forward to city council. That did get delayed due to a site posting error, so that will go to council next week. I also mentioned that we had seen a large increase in what we call our pre-app meetings. Just to give you an example, we did receive 10 cases on the October, first October intake cycle. So I anticipate that the agendas that will be coming our way will be increasing in volume. in volume. One last thing, something to keep in mind, and we have meetings coming up into the holiday season. Specifically, we have a meeting the week before Thanksgiving, on the 21st of November. Then moving into Christmas, we have a meeting scheduled on December 18th, and another one on January 2nd. If you know that you will be out of town or have plans and won't be able to attend that, those, due to previous engagements, if you could please reach out to Michelle Fournier, we just want to make sure that we'll have quorums for those meetings, and whether any rescheduling needs to occur. So I appreciate that.
Great. Thanks so much. We will close item seven and move to item eight, commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items. Commissioner Delviera?
I think this has come up several times, not just tonight, but over the past couple of months, where we're, we're proving things that we might not necessarily feel good about, but it's within, you know, the regulations and the codes and everything like that. And I've talked to Megan, I've talked to Angela about this, and I know Carrie's mentioned it before as well. Like, what's, what's the next step for Reno, right? Like, we have the master plan, but we're still doing a little bit of sprawl and fix. And so, one thing that might be interesting is to, for each of the wards, the planning commissioners to kind of talk about some of the issues that's happening in, in their areas. And maybe, you know, we do it with the city planners, just to kind of get a sense of areas that we need to be thinking about or considering. Because we, we can change the codes. I mean, we can, we can do that if it makes sense, right? And so I don't know if it's, you know, we just sort of, you know, take, take a meeting, and we, you know, spend a few minutes kind of talking about what's, what's happening. How can we revitalize? What is the vision we have for these different wards or the different neighborhoods? But I think that would be, it would be interesting for me to hear from the other wards what they're looking for, and hopefully I can share some of the issues that are in my ward, too.
Any further, Commissioner Becerra?
You haven't heard enough of me tonight, Chair. No, thanks for teeing me up, Commissioner. Actually, there's a parallel here. One of the things I wanted to ask is just a, a formal request to agendize a continuation of the excellent training that Angela provided the last time, but this time where we focus more on, on staff presenting how they assess key factors, like public safety, compatibility and so forth, which I think would be good, and setting the stage or expectations for applicants on how, how their presentation or projects fit into compatibility and those other factors I mentioned. And obviously, of course, all within NRS and stuff, nothing above and beyond, but just to help kind of bring everything together with what staff presents already, and then what they're seeking to do, all within the findings, of course. And I sent a letter to our fine staff about that as well. So there's some context there.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Any further suggestions? Hearing none, we will close item eight and move to item nine, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Do we have anyone in the chambers wishing to speak under general public comment? Seeing none, do we have anyone on Zoom wishing to speak under this item?
Looks like we do have a hand raised. Tyler, are you wishing to speak?
Yes, hi. I didn't realize we could make another public comment. I'm glad you guys opened this up. So my public comment I would like to do, in Title 18 you passed during COVID 2020, it was on the agenda, 2020, January 2021, it passed, and it basically stopped all the cabaret licenses, all karaoke, bands, music, entertainment must stop at 11:00 PM. And every business now has to apply for a conditional use permit at the cost for us small businesses for $5,000. And that is non-refundable if it is not approved. I would like this board or council to look at creating, and Angela talked a lot about it today, entertainment districts, how to create vibrancy. I have a business, The Emerson in Midtown, and we would like to see an entertainment district created and a Midtown corridor zones, so that each business or bar doesn't have to get a conditional use permit in the Virginia Street corridor from downtown all the way through Midtown. Because right now, it's stifling to our business. It is crippling us. People want places to go that have activities, music, karaoke. And currently, the code that you passed makes that all illegal after 11:00 PM, unless you apply for these conditional use permits. So I'd like you to kind of think about creating entertainment zones, or this overlay zone, how you're talking about the signs, that that could go down into Midtown. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do you have anyone else on Zoom wishing to speak?
We do not have anyone else with their hand raised.
Okay. We will close item nine and move to item 10, adjournment.
So moved.
I second that. Third is...
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.